I am going to call this regular meeting of the City Council to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here. And Madam Clerk, if you could read the cable TV television announcement, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T, U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, October 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, October 11th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Very good. Next, we have items 7 and 8, which is the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. I understand Walt Little is there in the room from St. John Vianney. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Walt will lead us in the invocation, but first, we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And let's see, if I'm not mistaken, Darrell Blindwell is in the room?
He was, but he stepped out of the room.
Oh, he just stepped out. Well, Cyrus, you're the next closest on my screen, so if you would, in the room, lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, folks out there, it will be a little messy. We know how this works now, but just do your best, stick along with Cyrus or your own cadence, whatever you prefer. Please remain standing, because immediately after the Pledge of Allegiance, Walt Little will have an invocation for us. So, very good. Cyrus, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I did say three, Mayor. And to the public, for what I'm saying, one nation, God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Walt Little, if you would go to the podium?
Um, um, with them.
Now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. You're on.
Let us pray. God in heaven and on earth, you call us to be the salt of the earth. You call us to be light in the world. You liken us to the holy city set in a place of honor. If that be true, Lord, bless us that we may live our lives in service to others, that our light, your light, the essence of our being, your being, may shine forth for all to see in the goodness of our deeds and give praise and glory to your name. We especially pray this day for the family and friends of those lost in the fires that are devastating our land and those lost to the virus which is overwhelming our health care system. Let them know that you are with them, Lord, in this time of need and comfort them in their sorrow. For this we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Walt. Thank you, Cyrus. I think we're getting better at the pledge in this remote way. Well, keep practicing.
You're right.
All right. Next up, we have presentations, of which there are none, and then, public comments. So, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk if you happen to be in the room at City Hall. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by me at that point on the agenda when that item is heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Now, there are other ways to be recognized for public comment. You can raise your hand here in Zoom. If you click on, I think it's Participants, at the bottom of that window, there should be a little ability to raise hand. You could also turn your video on and sort of wave at us. That will work. There are also links on the City Council Agenda and a phone number you can call into directly to make comments. You can also comment by email in advance, and that will be shared with all of us. So, Stacy, have I covered all the options there?
Yes, you have.
All right, very good. So, with all that said, do we have any public comment?
We do. So, we have one speaker in the room who has submitted a public speaker card. I have one email that has been submitted so far, and we have one in Zoom whose hand I can see raised. So, we'll start with the person in the room. Helen.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Helen Wellen-Bachal. I live at 2600 Tierra Grande Circle. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to add to what I said the last public meeting, dealing with history. Okay, I noticed that Rancho Cordova started its endeavor to be cityhood in 1960. So, 42 years later, went on the ballot, and one year after that, we became a city. 10 years after that, we talked about the three big things was a place to prosper, a place to play, and a place to belong. What I have concerns about is it seems like we forgot our back history. We became a city and we dropped everything out. I don't see diversity in what we classify as being important. I see that we lost the most historical building. So, I'm wondering, the stewardship of the city, the person in charge of the history, what did they do? We, for 42 years, we worked at becoming a city. Somewhere along the line, somebody should have thought about the history. So, we probably have gotten a lot of good stuff from people. So, what is Rancho Cordova doing to preserve the historical artifacts and not let them go the wayside of the deterioration of the most historical building in Rancho Cordova, which to me was a slap in every military's face when you let that building deteriorate? In 2004, it became vacant, and in 2018, they petitioned to have it removed. I came to Rancho and no one knew it was removed until I told them the building's missing. So, my big thing is, there's got to be another thing that has a historical significance. We look like we whitewashed our history. We have the Kilgore Cemetery, but I don't see a black cemetery. I don't see an Asian cemetery there. Somewhere along the line, we have history of cultural diversity, and I do not see it in the city of Rancho. I, at this time, request somebody figure out how to get diversity in our history. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment.
The next comment that I have is a written comment from Sean. This was emailed to the council and printed for those in attendance and in the back of the room. The topic is related to a church tent revival and a gathering of 100 people. They're concerned for that, so I wanted to share that with you.
Okay.
And then, next, we do have Carl, who is in Zoom. I'm going to unmute you so that you can speak. Carl, you'll have three minutes to be able to speak.
Go ahead, Carl.
Terrific. Terrific. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Stacy, Mayor Sander, and council members for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I'll try to be quick. My name is Carl Salmonson. I live in a little community we call Tiffany West off Rod Bodery in Rancho. A couple of months ago, I attended a presentation by TruMark about the planned development of Cassus property.
Carl, if I can pause you, Carl, if I can pause you right there. I'm not going to penalize you for time, but I am going to recuse myself from this discussion. Garrett, if you're here, you just take over the meeting for a minute as Vice Mayor. I have to recuse myself on this matter because it is a property too close to my home, and under California State Code, I can't influence something that could have a financial impact on me. So, with any discussion of that project, I recuse myself, and so I will do so now as well. Stacy, if you would just text me if we get past any comments on that project, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Carl, I'll restart your time.
Thank you, Mayor Sander. Absolutely understand.
All right, Carl. Go ahead.
I'll be quick. So, I attended the TruMark presentation and saw the planned development of the Cassus property. I understand the need for housing and the fact that we've got private property owners that want to sell their property and move forward. This is all, nothing I would like to fight. I was disappointed to see in the plans, the design of the new neighborhood and the fact that there were only two entry and exit points for 200, nearly 250 homes, and those entry points, one of them appears to me, the primary one being down my little street, and Rod Bodery, the primary entry point into the Parkway. And the concept of a couple of years of construction traffic followed by an attorney of potentially thousands of daily vehicle trips down my little street made me think it will significantly change our life in this neighborhood. I also thought there were a couple of other concerns related to the history of this piece of property, including the Native American history and the ecology. A lot of huge heritage trees, and I've walked the stretch of river fishing many times, and it's one of the wildest stretches of river left in town. I can point out beaver dens and other animal dens on this stretch that are active to this day. Additionally, I think the lack of connectivity to the rest of the neighborhoods around us create potential unsafe conditions in the event there were a wildfire event on the river, where this new neighborhood would have trouble getting out along with the rest of us. So, I understand this isn't on the agenda. I just wanted to come in and voice a couple of concerns and make sure that we're speaking up, and hopefully you're listening to the community. I really believe that with some tweaks to this plan, this neighborhood could be a big addition to Rancho Cordova and could be equitable for the entire community. I think we could provide better connectivity to the communities to the west of me, to the Parkway, who now have to use Folsom Boulevard to get into Rod Bodery. And I just hope that we could effect some positive changes to this to make it a little more positive development than what it appears to be now. And so, with that said, I'll sign off, and I know this is coming up on the agenda, and I'm sure I'll be back, and I appreciate the time for you guys allowing me to speak my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Garrett, Garrett, can I make this? I just want to make one quick comment. I plan to send an email out to the residents that have been asking for a meeting, for me at least. You know, the developer, as well as the residents, have the right of due process in this case and in this process. And I've talked to the city attorney on this development and others like it in this process. And personally, I haven't taken meetings with this developer since they submitted their application. And just to keep in mind, for those of us that aren't recusing ourselves, at some point, there will be a public hearing where we have to listen to all of the evidence before us and make a decision, and if any of us make some sort of commitment or take a position in this matter prior to that hearing, we would then have to recuse ourselves from that hearing. So, I hope that folks understand that I am reading every email that I get on this. I'm listening to every public comment that I get on this, but sitting down and having a meeting with the hopes of I or some other council member to make some sort of commitment to either residents that are near it or to the developer would essentially defeat your purpose, which would be that I or another council member would have to recuse ourselves if we made positions or made commitments. So, I just want to make sure that people understand that. I'm going to be sending an email out to that effect, that most of the folks that have asked to meet with me about this matter, but I just wanted to share here at the City Council. And again, if you want to look at examples of what I'm talking about, you can look no further than the Curtis Park Development in Sacramento and the litigation that's been going on there, because council members and city staff clearly had some positions prior to them ever having a hearing on that matter.
Thank you.
Hi, Garrett. Yeah, Garrett. So, I want to add to that for Carl's benefit, just add to that, that I suspect all of us have been forwarding all of your emails to staff so that they have a record of your contact information and they know exactly what your feelings are, so that they have that as they work with the applicant as we go forward.
Linda, that's a really good point, too. Again, this is the time in the process for our staff to be collecting public data and public input on this matter to share with us at a public hearing at a later date.
Yes, yeah, that's important.
Really great point. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for those positive comments. That makes us feel a little bit better, and we'll be trying to stay involved and participate with you through the process. Thank you. And thank you for your input on this, too. We appreciate it.
What's the next speaker about?
I'm going to invite Sean, who is in Zoom, and then, I'm going to jump to the speaker card that I just received from an individual in the room. So, let's jump to Sean, who is in Zoom. Sean, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
And if you can just give the mayor a moment so that he can join us.
Sure.
We're clear, and we have Sean, who is in Zoom and ready to share his public comment. Sean, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have to send an email that y'all have in front of you. Can you hear me?
Sir, we need you to speak up.
You can speak up just a little.
Is that better?
Not really.
All right. Do me the respect, Gary. How's that? Better?
Better.
Okay, and the best, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So, I sent that email that y'all have in front of you, and I'm afraid that the printout won't really do justice. This event that took place in Lincoln Village was over the entire week, and most nights there was over 100 people there without masks on. They were dunking each other in tanks for baptism. It was madness. It was madness. So, I've been told by one of my fellow citizens that she contacted Youssef Mugal, and she sent the video and the email, and we're just wondering, if the permit didn't come from the city, where did it come from? We can't hold the church responsible if they had a permit, but the person who issued that permit should be held responsible for allowing it to take place. Not only was it a health hazard, but it was a public nuisance. The music was rock concert level. It was a rock concert stage with rock-like music in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We bought a place in Midtown. I'd expect that. If we lived somewhere in downtown San Francisco, maybe so, but this is far east Sacramento and way west Rancho Cordova, and I would just like to get some answers.
Cyrus, if you're available there. Thank you very much for that comment, Sean. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I know this is, we've gotten emails, and we've had a lot of discussions, I guess, between residents and staff on this topic. I don't know, I've been an email contractor to several residents on this topic. So, Cyrus, maybe you want to say something at this point?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to. I just want to start by saying that this was not an authorized or permitted event by the city. They reached out to the city staff. In fact, we found out about the event, and we reached out to them first, and in conversations with them, we let them know about the county Department of Health requirements and the guidance that they had issued, that the event has to be limited to 100 people with the social distancing, face mask, all the requirements that are included in the county health order. And we also connected them with county health department. They received the same exact information from the county health department, and SAC Metro Fire also contacted them, let them know that this is, these are the guidelines and the requirements. I think in their discussion, as we understood, in their discussions with the county health department, they had indicated that they have every intention of following and complying with these guidelines, and unfortunately, we observed, and based on the information they put on the social media, and we also sent some of our code enforcement officers to look at the event, and we noticed that they're not following the requirements. So, our staff has been in constant communication with them, letting them know that this is in violation, clear violation of the county Department of Health Order, and I know they've also received the same message from the county. Unfortunately, they have not been a good neighbor, and I'm very comfortable saying that, that they have neglected and they have not listened to any of the concerns raised by residents, by the neighbors, and the city and county staff. Ultimately, this is a county health order, and the enforcement of this county health order is upon the county, and we have no indication as to what follow-up action they will be taking related to this event. I hope this provides answers.
All right, thank you, Cyrus.
I'm sorry.
Stacy, do we have additional public comment?
We do.
Thank you very much for raising that, Sean. I'm glad we were able to respond to that on the record.
We have one additional person, Lisa Pappas.
I have a question in regards to the council's impartiality when it comes to public votes on things. My understanding is, the council is not allowed to weigh in on any matter with any build or permit required until it goes for a vote. They're not allowed to express an opinion if, like you, Dave, I know there's some things in your backyard right now that require you to recuse yourself. At what point do contributions or potential signage placement in support of candidates constitute a conflict of interest for a city council member? If they're taking perhaps campaign contributions from a builder in our community or a builder who'd like to be a part of our community, and that builder has things coming up for permit, are they required to then recuse themselves as, I believe it was Terry was saying? Because to me, it's kind of a conflict of interest, and I think the public has a right to be aware. I know campaign contributions are made public. Those records are public. So, before things come up, is that something that's discussed? Or if you're not allowed to vote on something because it's in your backyard, are you then also disqualified from voting if you've taken money or favors from someone who is also part of the voting process?
All right, very good questions. Adam, you want to respond to that briefly, if you could? I think that's also worthy of a response.
Sure, I'm also happy to meet with the speaker offline if the council would like. The short answer for the public is, the process is very transparent. Council members are required to disclose on publicly available forms all of their major campaign donations. So, there is this whole transparency, and the city clerk's office collects and the state receives all of those documents. So, there's no issue whatsoever with transparency. The laws with respect to recusals because of a personal financial interest, such as the location of your home being next to a particular development project or the location of, or your business being the applicant for a particular permit for the city, are different and generally quite a bit more strict than those involving the requirement to disclose for campaign contributions. The laws requiring you to disclose for receiving campaign contributions are actually quite limited and narrow, but the second thing that council members do have to do, regardless of accepting campaign contributions, is keep an open mind, as was stated on the last item, in order to be able to vote on many items that come before them. So, they always, in addition to having very few limits on disclosures, on recusals as a result of campaign contributions, they still do have to be able to keep impartiality and a right to keep an open mind on a lot of the matters that come before them, regardless of any campaign contribution.
Adam, you might point out, though, that the city does have a conflict of interest policy that not only the council, but many of the senior staff have to adhere to, that limits our ability to vote on an issue if campaign contributions exceed a particular limit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. Any other public comments, Stacy?
That's all the public comment that I see at this time.
All right, very good. We are going to move on to council reports, and Mr. McGarvey, you are up first.
I don't have much right now. The mosquito pest control board is going to be meeting next week, as the sanitation district is. They're all making good progress as far as taking care of the mosquitoes. That one that has shown up, I think it's at his heights, is the one that you have to pay attention for. It's kind of a yellow strip, stripes, mosquito. It's a little bit different than most. It carries a variety of different diseases, but just pay attention with those seven items that they usually talk about, making sure you have no standing water and around the line like that. You can go online with the mosquito pest control board in the sanitation district, excuse me, of the mosquito pest control board, and you can find out everything you need on that. And you can also go online about sanitation district. They're getting close to some of the last items that they have to do. Now, it's going to be quite a bit. They're spending hundreds of thousands, hundreds of millions of dollars, excuse me, and the total is going to be close to that $2.1 billion that the state decided we had to do in Sacramento County. But they are getting close to that, and I'm hoping that we can get that finished. It's not going to cost us as much as they were saying it was going to, and I'm crossing my fingers on that, that a bill is not going to be increased any more than a dollar or two, and so that's something to look forward to. I'm hoping that the rain that they're saying may come or will come or something like that can at least slow down some of the fires. And my wife and I were trying to go to Clear Lake State Park, and we got partially there, had to turn around and come back on Friday because the smoke was so bad, we weren't going to even try to camp there or fish or anything else with the horrible smoke that we had from the fires there. Now, some of the fires, I think the Zog fire, and it's west of Chancet, I think it's down to 50 or 60% control or something like that. So, keep your fingers crossed on all those things, because we really want to have those things ended, and hopefully we don't have any more start, because the last two years, I think they said we had over 7 million acres burned in California. And all that five years of drought killed so many trees, so we've got millions of dead trees just waiting to burn also. So, hopefully, we'll get the rain that they're talking about. I mean, I think that's pretty much it that I have. Thank you.
Thanks, very good. Linda?
Okay, thank you. So, several days ago, Bob and I had a really good meeting with the developer that we had tentatively selected to work on the Civic Center project across the street from Mill Station, and we saw some of the ideas that they're thinking about, just so that we can validate that they really heard what the community has said to date and are putting that into their planning activities. I think I let you all know that Regional Transit is looking for not only a new headquarters building, but also locations for maintenance that would be all over the county as opposed to the one central location in downtown Sacramento, which is outdated, expensive, and costs an awful lot in terms of not only employee time, but bus fuel for all the dead heading that's required. And so, we had our first meeting the other day, and we are now going to take two tours of potential locations. One will be this week and one will be next week. So, that's really exciting. I'd like to say 916 Inc. for their work again to help our kiddos learn writing skills, and I appreciate receiving this book, which was done, young writers from AM Win Elementary. I'm looking, the title is maybe backwards on the screen, I'm not sure. Captain Cola and the Pilates Squirrel. So, I'm looking forward to reading about whatever a Pilates squirrel turns out to be. So I'm looking forward to reading about whatever a Pilates squirrel turns out to be. I want to talk about, I want to mention two things. We are obviously in the fall, this is election season, and regardless of whatever is going on, the contentious nature on the media every day, unfortunately we know that some signs of some of our candidates here in Rancho Cordova have been disappearing or have been discarded. And we want to encourage anybody who sees that kind of activity to call the police department because it is an interference with democracy and it is, it's a theft of private property. So you know, obviously the signs need to be located with the permission of the owner, but that means that they are legally placed there. And Stacy, as our elections officer, has been quite clear in when signs can go up, when they should come down, and we need to let the process work out. The other thing that's really sad because this is Halloween season and why not, everybody celebrates Halloween and everybody is very confused as how to celebrate Halloween this year. On the other hand, we've also had reports on the next floor of people having their very expensive Halloween decorations completely destroyed and that's not appropriate. We hope people would report that kind of thing also. And then finally, unfortunately, this seems to be the season, we need to recognize and honor two very tall trees in Rancho Cordova who have left us recently. One of them was Alice Sabo, bless her heart, her husband and his father were the first, some of the first doctors in Rancho Cordova. They were, I know Bob remembers, they were either, and I'm sorry, I don't remember whether they were the optometrists or they were the dentists, but they were the first, among the first doctors, first medical facilities here in Rancho Cordova. And then a longtime rotarian, just an absolute staple of rotary and wonderful committed local community servant, Ross McCarty, passed away. And for anybody who's been around rotary forever, Ross will truly be missed. So I would ask that we adjourn in their honor tonight. Thank you.
Okay, next up Donald.
Okay, I'll start and I'm sure David will have more to say about this entire time we use to do, but I got to sit in or join a Zoom call where it was announced and shared and we got to learn about the other cities for the National League of Cities Higher Education Basic Needs Working Room that has, I believe it's 11 other cities, the only other city in California is Richmond, California, which is my first time I thought we were talking about Virginia, but just the one down the highway. And what it's going to, essentially what we're doing is we were selected as one of these cities to look at how we support college students in our cities specifically around basic needs, so healthcare, food, housing, that kind of stuff, and try to learn from each other about how we can make sure that our college students are thriving in higher education, especially in cookie times or priority match and everything is distance learning. So looking forward to learning more about that. We had a Full Cordova Unified Two by Two and an Elk Grove Unified Two by Two. I would kind of put both of the meetings relatively in the same bucket. The county color code changed right around the same time and so there's a two-week kind of cooling off period now where school districts can get ready and start to plan and decide kind of how they want to approach moving forward and then they have to submit their plans to the county and come up with something. Elk Grove it sounds like is going to be having a meeting the 14th, I believe, is their next meeting that starts to review this stuff with their school board. Full Cordova, I want to say a little earlier than that, maybe this week sometime. I think the thing to keep in mind with both of those school districts at least that we talked to, the plans aren't set in stone yet. I don't think they under, I don't think they know yet how they're going to approach it, whether it's a hybrid model or they're going to bring in the highest need students first. I think both school districts, you correct me if I'm wrong, have students on campuses, mainly high need students or students that are younger that don't have childcare for some reason. I know even McGarvey Elementary over here, I threw my bike by during the day, there are kids on campus even now being served, I believe in the daycare services, the after school program, but it's mainly I believe are essential workers. So there's still some activity going on, but it's very, very limited. I would hope, from what I'm understanding, we're going to need to approach this with a lot of patience because there's a lot of school districts still trying to figure out what their plan is, what they thought they were going to do in the summer or were getting ready to as they were going to open up in the fall before kind of the kibosh got put on statewide. I think all those plans are still in existence, but none of them are set as what their plan's going to be with this new normal that we have. I want to commend Diane and the rest of the chamber staff on a great golf tournament. If there's one thing we can still do that feels somewhat like normal in this world is you can go and play in a golf tournament, goodness sake, a charity golf tournament. So hopefully they raise a lot of money for the chamber. Because it was on a county facility, there were a couple of extra rules, so we couldn't do a shotgun start, so there wasn't the kind of seeing everybody at one time and saying hi to each other because we all had to start at tee pads, so every 15, 20 minutes, I'd look you at all. But kudos to, you know, in this day and age, we can still do something that seems somewhat normal. And then finally-
And besides Donald, I think we know the team who won.
It wasn't me.
No.
Oh.
It might have been our assistant city manager and his team.
I didn't even see that. I'm still trying to figure out, when I left, I was closest, I had one closest to the hole, but I still haven't heard of that, that happened. I got one foot and nine inches away, but I still haven't heard of my, my one in the Callaways irons. But hey, if Micah, if you won that, congratulations. But again, without it being a shotgun start, we didn't all finish it at the same time. So I just, you know, you turn in your card, you go home. So Micah, did you win?
I really did.
According to the results, I think we did have a successful win for the city, so.
Well, congratulations, that's great. I think you'll be in there. But yeah, again, this is a unique time. Usually everybody finishes at the same time because the shotgun starts, you finish at the same time, you see all the scorecards, you have lunch or dinner afterward. We couldn't do any of that, so, but it was still a good day. And then finally, we did have an air district meeting. As everyone is well aware and Bob touched on it, the air quality is still very, very bad. It's expected to be that at least at the end of the week. I know I'm boarding the reports I get. I'm trying to do today, I think I laxed a little bit, but for the most part, five days a week, I'm getting three reports a day of what the forecast looks like in the different areas. And I've been sharing that with council and senior staff. If you're, if you don't want to get that, just reply to me and tell me and I'll, I'll start figuring through that people. But I just figured more information is better than less. But yeah, for the most part, it's not safe for kids to be outside, it's not safe for people with compromised breathing in general, you know, regardless of COVID, you know, the air is not healthy right now. So avoid being outside as much as you can. Probably at least until yeah, this Friday, there's a chance of rain. The last time we had rain, we also had, I think, 2,000 lightning strikes in Northern California, so hopefully that's not the same shock that we're about to get. Praying for rain in the summer in the Falkland would be somewhat of a sticky weekend, right? So we'd like some water, we don't want any more light. But that's it for me.
Okay, very good. Next up Garrett.
Doesn't show enough.
All right, I'm ready.
There you are.
Okay, so I met with the Sacramento library. We've since locked Rivka in a dark room so she'll never be able to leave. And you know what we're talking about? She's never retiring ever. But the library is still doing well and, which is amazing, and they're just finding new ways to be able to, they're actually hiring for IC people right now, so that's good thing. Because more digital, more people are using digital materials. I met with the civic planner and gave my one idea to the civic center. I'm hoping I can bring one in, very, I only need one thing to make it this successful. So it's very, very, I got it across really strongly. I met with Elk Grove Unified School District. For all my members like myself, we are not going back to school anytime soon. So even though we got that email, plan to be patient, it is not happening anytime soon. I repeat, it will take some time. And lastly, I sent my ringers to the golf tournament. Thank you Diane for a great golf tournament. They told me we were able to come in pretty high, being Donald's team and not the city team. Don't know how I feel about that, but we tried our best. So that's it for me.
All right, very good. Thank you Garrett. I have a lengthy list of meetings that have occurred in the past several weeks, but I'm going to try to be brief. I did participate in that first kickoff meeting of the National League of Cities Post-Secondary Education Project, and it's an exciting opportunity for Rancho Cordova to be named to that panel. I think we will be able to collaborate and learn a lot from the other cities, just a handful of whom are represented there, and speak to national level experts about ways we can prepare our kids for great success in post-secondary education. So we're already a leader, which is I think why we got nominated for this and accepted this program. And the question now is what can we do beyond what we are? What can we do to prepare our kids even more for post-secondary success and success in our job market? It was a very, very good meeting to kick that project off. I had a great conversation with a property owner in the business park about the future of the business park. And one topic that came up was is it possible to create paraisos or internal connections through multiple parcels that would sort of knit our business parks together in a way that you might see if you had a dedicated, you know, Class One trail somewhere? We don't have that, but we do have excess parking around these parcels. And if you sort of step back and looked at that in a non-traditional, like cycle map way, you could have a connection that went through that community, that allowed people to walk from where they work to places like Capital Village or other local destinations. If you could just create, carve out some parking and find grant money or whatever resource necessary to make those connections. There's a really kind of exciting discussion. There's also discussion about the Folsom South Canal and how that might be amenitized or made a greater attraction for the region because it does bounder, has the boundary of one, one side of the major business park in Rancho Cordova. So that was very interesting. What was that Linda?
Then they're done that.
Yes. Well, we continue having this discussion, hopefully someone will hit it out of the park for us.
Good idea.
I attended a rev and tax policy committee of the League of California Cities, was in a two by two meeting with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District, heard about their process going forward for reopening. Probably the biggest news for me was high school will not reopen until January at the earliest. They're going to work their way up through special needs kids and younger kids first. We had a state car transportation committee meeting, we had a great, dishealthy discussion at growing some neighborhoods on homelessness. And I filmed a lot of video clips for the state of the city last week. I'm not going to portray it, so it's all, it's all exciting in November when it comes out, but it was a lot of fun and I think this will be a really cool thing that our, that our city does this year in the face of a COVID and being unable to have our great community events, being able to do it kind of virtually in a fun way that also markets the city is a good thing. And finally, I did a coronavirus talk this past Tuesday that was very well attended. We actually, I think the chamber had to up their subscription to Zoom to let, to let people into it. I was interviewed by Kitty O'Neil and that aired a couple of times. And it was just a general, this is our situation with coronavirus and COVID, very generic information in my point of view as a scientist, but I think very helpful based on the feedback from the residents. So I don't know how many of you saw that, but it is going to be available on YouTube. And there were so many questions, I sort of said that, you know, if we get a vaccine in three weeks or a month, I'm willing to do that kind of discussion again, focus a little more on, on what vaccines are all about and what people might be thinking about those. I did a second coronavirus talk actually with a group of folks from the Indian community over the weekend that was arranged as well. So I've done a couple of those, I don't know how many of these coronavirus talks I've given now, it's probably approaching a dozen, but as long as people need that information, I'm able to provide it, I will continue to do so. All right, with that, I think I am done with my council report. We can, if there's other comments from council, we'll move on to Cyrus for city manager's report, item number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two brief items, I think just everything has already been mentioned. One is the discussion of the school resource officer at the Folsom Cordova Unified School District Board Meeting. At the last board meeting, there was a discussion about the SRO program and there were some discussions, some with our police department and also the City of Folsom Police Department related to their roles, responsibilities, a better definition of the work they do. And I think in the coming months, we will be engaging with them in some additional discussions related to the budget. But at this point, the board has agreed and endorsed the program for the school year 20 and 21, but there would be some additional conversations about the scope and the budget for the coming year. And the only other thing I wanted to point out is the city council had approved a grant program for small business. We sent out the notices and received about 102 responses, 102 businesses that responded expressing an interest. And it's probably encouraging to, for you to hear that 72 of these 102 applications are five employees or fewer. And 55 of them, of these businesses fall in what we call the priority one business category. So with the help of our staff and help with some of, one of our business consultants, we would be evaluating those applications, I would be making recommendations and awarding the grants. So I just wanted to take this opportunity, this has been once again another effort in the overall response that we've had to COVID and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank, thank our staff for great work done and stepping out to help our small business as much as we could. We also have some additional programs that we're working on to help our residents and some very specific programs and you will be hearing some announcements in the coming weeks and related to those, some of those programs. So with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you Cyrus. We are going on to, any questions for Cyrus? Okay, we are going on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull? There's actually one I would like to discuss ever so briefly, item 13.5. Otherwise, we're looking at items 13.1 through 13.6.
A motion made of the calendar?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second on the remainder of the calendar. Roll call please.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
That leaves item 13.5 on consent and I just had a brief comment, I want to be sure my colleagues were comfortable with this. We had asked, this is our rental housing smoking ordinance, we had asked that multifamily smoking ordinance, we had asked that mobile homes be considered in this. This, if you read the staff report, it says that it's a very technical question, will require a lot of analysis, and so the recommendation is moving forward without specifically applying this regulation to mobile homes. I just want to be sure everyone's aware of that. It was our intent to do so if possible. Legal analysis said not easily done, so that'll be something we'll need to come back to at a later date.
I got a letter from the gentleman at Mobile Country Club, so they're hoping we can get something in the not too distant future because something's affecting almost everyone who lives there. Because they are jacking up the price of the rent on the property that their pieces are on. So they would really like to have us continue to work on this as much as we can. And I'm going to- And I'm going to push for that also. I think it's something that needs to be done.
Adam, is there anything you want to add here?
Hearing none, I will move 13.5.
Can I just ask an additional?
Sure, go ahead.
Favor on this topic? If it's possible, I know I've asked this multiple times on this subject alone, around mobile homes at least. What can we and can't we do? I don't know if that needs to be workshop at some point, but I mean, we'd have members of the public come and tell us that, one, that rent control is something that's possible, and the state's about to weigh in on that. I don't know if that's going to affect it. But that code enforcement has been argued in front of us, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer to that. But I'd really like to have some sort of rundown, kind of like what we did when we talked about the smoking ordinance. What is within the city's power and jurisdiction and what isn't? And what is, you know, at the state level, you know, something that, something may be asking for us here, and they really need to be talking to Ken Cooley or one of the three state senators that cover our city? Because a lot of this stuff, I know, is covered by HCD and is not our business, and we don't have power over it. But I don't think I've ever had, like, a comprehensive explanation done. I don't know if that's a brief that could be put in as information. I know when I was on the school board, we used to have that a lot. Like, maybe we don't need to have a workshop, but maybe there's a public report that the city attorney's office could put forward and say, these are the things that the city could or couldn't do? And here example of how that works. But I'd be, I'd really appreciate that because I feel like, just to bottom line, we've got a lot of residents that are asking us to do things and even claiming that they think we can do them. And I don't think I've ever had a definitive answer as to what my power is as a city council member to affect their lives.
That's a good, that's a good point, Donald. I'd even go one further and say, you know, we might need some sort of a mobile home strategy as a city. As we've got mobile homes with properties that are falling into disrepair, or we may have, you know, code enforcement, police challenges in some parks. I don't know that we have any strategy. We certainly have, you know, senior citizens, budgetary challenges, trying to stay in mobile homes that they own. Having a citywide strategy on this, because we have a number of mobile home parks. A number of residents living in them.
Well, and I can, I can tell you that there's other cities in California that definitely do. I know I met with the City of Truckee a year or two ago, maybe two years ago. And they were having a huge problem in that part of Nevada County where new owners were coming in specifically raising rents and not doing deferred maintenance in the hopes of getting the population low enough where they can close it and redevelop it as a hotel or other things like that. So there are some huge, I don't think those are the issues we're facing here. But without some sort of comprehensive strategy about what we want to do in that space. But I, but David, just to kind of reiterate what I'm saying, before we can have a policy, we need to first figure out what the heck we even have the power to do.
What's even possible.
Yeah. Because some of the things we don't want to do, but then we can say, okay, there's 15 things that the residents are asking for, but there's only three we can do. That's probably a good starting point. And then decide which one we want to actually try to do. But I don't think I've ever had that answer.
Logically, that would be a point of the update to our housing element.
Yeah, I don't want to wait that long, so, I mean, to me, this is a very much.
But we're actually updating it right now.
No, I know, but that's a very comprehensive look at it. This may be a component of it, but this may need to go a little faster. And honestly, the residents are asking for HCD.
Okay, but in order to give it teeth, it needs to be part of the housing element.
Yeah, it might, it might end up there. But I think that, that analysis of just what can we do and what can't we do? Because I've heard pieces of that over decades now that are conflicting.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very confusing.
Yeah, and I would argue as a former housing developer, they tried to hang his hat a couple of times with jurisdictions on the fact that, you know, you're not going to need your housing element if you don't approve my stuff. The, there's a very lack, lacking of teeth in housing element law and enforcement. It's gotten a little better the last couple of years, but there's not a lot there to hang your hat on.
A couple of things to add on that. The, there have been some things that we can control in what the state has done. You can't keep people out of an apartment. You can't keep people out of a duplex or, but you, people are leaving the mobile, mobile homes because they are not under the same, for some reason, you can rent someone and not kick him out of an apartment. You can rent to someone and not kick him out of a duplex, but you can kick him out of a mobile home because we don't have the same control on one as you have on the other. But it's rent. It is someone living on someone else's property or in someone else's property. And I don't know why there is such a big difference between a mobile home and an apartment complex or a duplex or a quadplex. It makes no difference to me. I don't make any sense at all.
And I agree with you, Bob. It's, I've never understood, you know, we all get the magazines and publications on the Golden State Mobile Home Owners Association. I've never understood why they don't lobby the legislature to get themselves included under the Business and Professions Code instead of under HCD. That's the whole problem. They don't have the same rights as a renter has.
Right. And the park owners have been very effective in shaping rules and regulations to themselves immune from a lot of local accountability.
Yeah. Golden State Mobile Home Association is our organization, I believe, has tried on multiple occasions to do exactly what you said. And HCD and owners have really fought us. And I mean, and the biggest thing to know about all of this stuff is to somehow say that these are actually both, that you could actually take one of these units and move it anywhere else. So that like, well, if you don't, if you don't want to be here, you don't want to pay this rent, then you can take your mobile home and go somewhere else. And I know we're getting into a policy discussion here, but I, I.
So we've probably got too much topic.
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps I could restate your request for a future agenda item on this at the end of the agenda under future council items. I'd be happy to restate.
That'd be great.
What it is, my understanding would like me to.
In the meantime, I have a motion on 13.5, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
That was a motion by Bud, second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that brief discussion, counsel. That was very helpful. Item number 14, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items, since this is a matter of the routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing. Ask the city clerk if there's any speaker cards.
I do not have, I do not have any speaker cards from anyone in the room, and I don't see anyone on Zoom who is asking to speak.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any items the council wishes to pull? Because otherwise, we're talking about 14.1 and 14.2.
I will move approval of both items.
Motion, is there a second?
I did second.
Okay, roll call of item 14, which is 14.1 and 14.2.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
We are going on to public hearing items, which there are none, and regular calendar items under 16. So 16.1, if the clerk could read that subject, please.
Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Oversight Board Appointments.
Okay. We have a staff report on this item.
We do. Stacy Delaney is getting situated at the dais.
Hi, Stacy.
Hello. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I help manage the city's Community Enhancement Fund. And tonight, we will be appointing new members to the Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Oversight Board. You may recall that back in 2018, the original board took their oath of office and began their terms. This board includes seven residents, two of which are students. One is a high school student attending George Washington Carver, and the other is a Promise Program recipient at Folsom Lake College. And the other five are adult oversight board members, and those are the five that have their terms ending. And this board does provide an extra layer of oversight to help monitor the Community Enhancement Fund, and they help provide feedback and recommendations to city staff. This includes reviewing the accomplishments that are achieved during the prior fiscal year, and those are the ones that we highlight in the annual citizen report. We also confirm revenues received in comparison to the budget. They look at actual expenditures in comparison to what was awarded during the grant process. And lastly, they look at the actual grantees' compliance with the city's reporting requirements. So as I mentioned, five of these members have fulfilled their board requirements, and we opened an application period, and we accepted applications from members of the public who are full-time Rancho Cordova residents. They have to be at least 18 years of age and have to be registered Rancho Cordova voters. And during that process, we received six qualified applications for the five available seats. Each applicant is given the opportunity to speak tonight. They'll have up to three minutes. Each council member will recommend a single applicant to serve a two-year term, and then the full city council will need to vote to appoint the five adult oversight board members. We have people participating in a variety of ways. We have two in person, two via Zoom, and two who are not here, but I'm going to go ahead and read their comments. And I would ask at this time, Mayor Sander and council, that Stacy Lightner will be calling up each applicant to speak. I'll go ahead and go over the order, and then they'll briefly give their statements, and then we'll turn it back over to you. So the first up is going to be Brian Faulkner. He's going to participate via Zoom. Second up will be Liz Kastner. I'm going to read her letter. The third up will be Katie Hollingsworth. She is here in person. Then will be Laura Popiak. She's also here in person. The fifth will be Olga Escobar. I'm going to read her letter. And then Tega Nifton should be participating via Zoom. So Stacy, if you would like to turn it over to Brian via Zoom.
I'm looking for Brian in Zoom, and I don't see his name.
Okay.
He may be listed as some other person.
Sure, I can go on to the next one, and then if he raises his hand via Zoom, we can identify him that way.
Great.
So I'm going to read Liz's statement. She says, hello, city council members. My name is Elizabeth Kastner. I apologize for not being there in person or via Zoom due to a minor illness. I currently reside in the Cordova Meadows neighborhood. I was born and raised in Rancho Cordova, in the Cordova Gardens neighborhood, and I moved to the Midwest after I married an Air Force member. I lived in a variety of different states in the Midwest for 30 years, and I returned back to my hometown of Rancho Cordova almost seven years ago. Rancho Cordova has changed immensely in the 30 years I was absent. Some for the better and some for the worse. Mayfair Air Force Base closed, and Rancho Cordova became a city. We survived a recession and the crash of the housing market. We continue to be challenged by a homeless crisis. We struggle to find, or we struggle to fund enhancements to older areas of Rancho Cordova, which would draw new businesses to the area as well as encouraging homeownership and pride in our properties. My desire to serve as a committee member on the Oversight Board comes from being a taxpayer and a resident of Rancho Cordova. I am very interested in seeing that our taxes are used to enhance Rancho Cordova and to ensure that these enhancements foster an environment that encourages Rancho Cordova to continue growing as a city, a city that businesses want to open their doors in and that families want to move in. Thank you for your time. The sec.
Very good. We are getting a lot of feedback, at least I am in my location. If we could just have everybody except for Stacy Delaney turn off your microphone, see if that helps. I noticed that it appears on our attendees list, there's noise coming in on the phone line, 851-8700. Perhaps that was the source of it. I'm not sure.
We're trying.
All right, Stacy, go ahead.
We're trying to work through that with our IT department and our clerk's office. Stacy.
Everything there was understandable. It was just noisy.
Okay. Stacy, the next person up on the list would be Katie Hollingsworth, who is here in person. Katie, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, it won't take that long. My name is Katie Hollingsworth. I live in Somerset Ranch, and I work for the state as an operations manager for California Prison Industry Authority. I applied to be a part of the Oversight Board because I'd like to be more involved in the community. And I also believe that opportunities for this level of transparency help with having people feel more heard and connected in their community, and that's something I would like to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. The next person I show on the list is Laura Popiak, and she's also here in person.
Laura, you'll also have three minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak in front of a screen. This is extraordinary times. I hope everybody is staying healthy and happy. My name is Laura Popiak. I am here as a candidate for the Measure H Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Oversight Board. I was born and raised in Hafun Bay, but now live here in Rancho Cordova in Capital Village with our twin 15-year-old boys who go to Cordova High, Go Lancers, and our two dogs. And we also have three boys who are now out in the world doing amazing work. I understand that Rancho must remain business-friendly given the daily influx of workers that fill the business parks around the city. But we can't forget the locals, the families, our kids, our grandparents, friends, and neighbors who live here in Rancho and power this city every day. Bus drivers, firefighters, teachers, doctors. Measure H is critical to Rancho's ability to provide resources for families to learn, grow, play, work, and blossom. As Rancho Cordova continues to grow at a quick pace, including the new Rio de Oro project that includes more than 10,000 new homes, I believe it's even more critical to manage and be transparent of Measure H expenditures. My professional background includes film and television, communications, media, marketing, branding. I have decades of project management leadership experience, and I can do all of that in Spanish and English. I've owned my own business for 20 years, and I'm well-versed in budgeting, KPIs, ROIs, and all the other TLAs out there. I'm confident that I'm able to understand the board's mission and responsibility. I'm knowledgeable and comfortable with Robert's Rules of Order, the Bagley Keen Open Meeting Act, as well as the California Public Records Act. I'm eager to use these skills in a way that provides my community, city, state, and country a better place to live, work, play, and thrive. As national politics continue to divide us, it is critical to remember, all politics are local, and we all need to get and be more involved locally. So I'm here, offering my skill set and experience to the Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Oversight Board and local public service in honor of all of those who have fought and continue to fight for equal rights, human rights, truth, transparency, and democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Could you remind me of the last speaker's name, please? Stacy?
Prior to Laura, it was Katie Hollingsworth. The person who just spoke. Laura Popiak is the person who just spoke.
Thank you.
Yes. The next one is Olga Escobar. Olga also submitted a letter, so let me grab that.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to apologize for not being able to be here in person. I did not have enough time to be able to make arrangements at work to be able to be here. Second, I would also like to apologize for my grammar errors or any misspelling. I will do my best to keep this as short as possible. My name is Olga Escobar. I have been a resident of Rancho Cordova in the neighborhood of California Jazz for a little over a year now. I moved here from Los Angeles. I was born and raised there. I came out here because I was given the opportunity through my work to transfer here, and I jumped at the chance. A year later, I find myself trying to figure out what is the best way to go about setting roots here. I was blessed to see this opportunity and joining this committee and thought to myself, what better way to start feeling a part of my community as this? I have to start somewhere, right? I served in committees in my children's school when my oldest, now 21, was in pre-K. I did this for over five. I did this for over five years, but had to stop due to life circumstances. I have always wanted to do more for my community, and now that I am older and wiser, I would like the opportunity to do so here. Also, because I have two semi-small children that I believe will help, it will help them to see their mother working in other things, not just work and home. This was good for my older kids when they were young, but I believe that there is more than just helping your community with education. I believe that there are other aspects in life and in our community that can make us stronger as individuals and as a community. I would like it very much if I would be given the chance to serve not only to set roots here, but to open the door for a new, fresh start. Thank you, Olga Escobar. And if you weren't sure which area of Rancho Cordova is Cordova or California Jazz, it's the area that is sometimes referred to as South White Rock.
And the last person this evening is Tegan Nifton, and Tegan should be joining via Zoom.
Tegan, I just unmuted you. Can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Tegan Nifton. I am a resident of Somerset Ranch, and I've been in Rancho Cordova for 10 years, most of that in Stone Creek. I work for SMUD as, I lead a team who manages SMUD's largest commercial accounts for retail property management and hospitality, many of those here in Rancho. And I've been really invested in the city of Rancho since moving here. I was part of Leadership Class 10, the perfect 10, by the way. And I, after that, had the opportunity to serve two years on the Board of Directors for the St. John Children's Museum. I've been a part of River City Christian Church for the last decade, volunteering in children's ministries and other opportunities there. And I also have three kids who go to school at Navigator and Mitchell Middle School. I'm very invested in the community and our future and making sure that Rancho is a place that our kids can experience diversity in art and culture. And I'm excited for the opportunity to get deeper into some of the projects and learn about what our communities are doing. So this opportunity came up, and it looked like a great way for me to give back, which I think is really important. So it's the opportunity to apply.
Stacy, has Brian Faulkner indicated that he's on via Zoom?
I don't see Brian Faulkner's name. And Brian Faulkner, if you are present in Zoom, if you can use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen.
If not, I can share a few comments from him that's in his application. So Brian is a Rancho Cordova Soccer Club Board Member. He has held a variety of positions, including Assistant Manager, Coaching Coordinator, and a Webmaster. He is also involved in Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts and youth leadership through his local church. He is a coding instructor and parent helper at McGarvey Elementary School, and he is a local business owner, and the business name is Code Ninjas here in Rancho Cordova. And when asked why he wanted to serve on the Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Oversight Board, he stated, "I want to continue to serve and increase my sphere of influence within the community. So far, I have supported many local organizations and invested financial resources heavily into my community in a way that I felt would provide more opportunities for Rancho Cordovans. I see this as a natural step in the process of becoming a city leader." So at this point, I will go ahead and turn it over to council. If you have any questions about the process or any suggestions, please let me know.
Okay. We have six applicants for five slots. My proposal is very simple. We accept all six.
That is an option. Adam, you can go, if you would like to unmute yourself, you can just briefly describe what we'll need to do just internally.
Do we have a charter permission?
We passed a resolution.
The council adopted, yeah, the council passed a resolution that approved five seats for this commission. You certainly have the ability, if you conclude that this is a significant and all-talented spate of potential candidates that you all would like to encourage to public service by expanding the number of board members on the, you're welcome to. We would just want to postpone this item by one council meeting to bring back an update to that resolution and then place that update expanding. We would probably want to expand it from, from five to seven to keep a odd number. And then you could take the action on consent to approve both of those two items. Unfortunately, we did not place the resolution before you at this time, so you can generally give us that direction, and we'd get it all done by the next meeting.
And council?
Yeah, this is just kind of a procedural question, Adam. This is an information item, so it's going to come back on consent anyway. Couldn't we just do it then?
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, okay. All right, good. We're on consent. Yeah, I'm fine.
Oh, do we, so do we need a motion now to revise the application and bring it, I mean, the resolution and bring it back?
If you would just like to give us direction to bring back an expansion of the, of the, a resolution expanding the board membership. And Stacy, without objections, I would go again from, from five to seven rather than have, in fairness to them, it may be useful to you to have seven, not six ultimately on the board.
And Ad-
All right. Is there a motion that affects?
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
Yeah, I have a suggestion, too. Go ahead.
If we do revise Reso 129-2017 and expand it from five to seven, Adam, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I believe we can still appoint six members on the next city council meeting, and one would be vacant, and we could then later on fill that position. Is that correct?
Yes, of course. It is, it's common for this type of board to occasionally have vacancies that take a little while to complete, but the, and they would frequently function with less than a full board for various different reasons.
Okay.
And I would move that we direct-
Just get one, two votes.
I would move that we direct staff to revise the particular resolution whose number Stacy quoted and bring it back with the expansion to seven, two-year-term board numbers and to our next, to our next agenda.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Can I, can I make a suggestion to that?
Yep, discussing.
So we're talking six community members, and we already have two student mem, two student seats. So we're ultimately ending up with a committee of, yeah, a committee of eight. So why not, why don't we maybe also look at expanding the student portion of it?
Well, we're actually going to create a board of seven plus two, so it's nine. It's just there's one empty seat.
Which can be filled later.
That's not how I heard it, but, okay. If we're, if we're speaking with nine, that's essentially what I was thinking. Okay. We're in the same spot. My other suggestion would be, in the future, maybe the next time that we do this appointment, consider the makeup of it, but getting to a point where we're appointing maybe half of this committee at one time. So maybe some of these people would stay on for an additional year or something like that. But you don't want to have this entire committee turnover every two years, which is essentially what I did, that's, which is essentially what's happening, right? There's no institutional memory between the first two years and these two years. So one thing to maybe look at, and we don't have to do it with the next resolution, but looking at it that maybe the next time that we do this, we have some continuing board members that would apply for one or two more years, and we pick from the existing board, and then we have open seats for people that haven't. So that you have the opportunity of cycling people in, because imagine that the entire city council is new in November. Right? There's a reason that we don't elect them all at once.
Yep.
Except for the first.
Bob?
Yeah, I was just saying, I liked your idea of having the six people who show interest right now, David. So I would like to go along with what you said.
I think you've exited the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Yep. Yep. Go, go, please.
Who was the second? Was it Bob?
Me.
Oh, Donald. Thank you. Councilmember McGarvey?
How did you get Donald Garrett? We don't even sound the same. I got way too much hair for the Donald confusion.
Vice Mayor Gatewood, were you the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember McGarvey?
Hi.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes, and congratulations to Tegan and Brian. I know these two are going to make great members on the board.
Mayor Sander?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring this back on October 19th.
We are moving on to item 16.2, subject of which is the 2020 Public Works Infrastructure Update. And I see Albert coming forward. Welcome, Albert.
Thank you.
Go right ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay. I think we're just queuing up a slideshow.
Okay.
Thank you, Professor Stephanie. And good evening, Mayor Sander and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the city has been working diligently to bring infrastructure to our community that builds new connections, adds safety, and adds beauty to the community. And this evening, we're going to be presenting to council an update on a number of projects, including recent accomplishments, projects coming soon, and projects award, projects that we've recently received awards from the American Public Works Association on. And we'd of course appreciate any feedback from city council. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Edgar Medina, who manages our CIP program, who will give us some more information on these projects.
Thank you, Director Stricker. It's a pleasure to be back. It's been a while for me to present. As mentioned, with the Public Works Department has had a lot of activity over the past year, so we want to highlight some of these recent accomplishments, and some of the projects are active, and then even some awards. To begin with, we'd like to start with the Cordova Parks Safe Frost to School Project. That just completed in September, so last month. This was a safety enhancement project where we received a state grant, and we improved sidewalks, curb ramps, bullbouts. Some rectangular rapid flashing beacons were installed. On the screen, you see a kind of a before and after of two locations to kind of highlight the improvements. This is a much-needed project because it improves pedestrian access to the residents of the Cordova Parks and the students that make connections to Cordova High School, as well as the Mills Middle School. This has a total project value of just under 2.5 million, with just under 1.9 million coming from the state grant. The Semfidel Complex Project is our next project. This one was right on our, our front door. This widened the Semfidel Interchange on the west side, upgraded the, the loop on and off ramps, as well as some of the eastbound and westbound off ramps off the highway. We had signal upgrades, pedestrian improvements. This was quite a project. We're completely done from a construction standpoint. We're just doing the administrative closeout project. This project was technically completed in August, has a total project value of 12,585,000, with four, just over 4.4 million dollars of grant money tied to this project. Folsom Five. So we are scheduled to complete this project in November, so next month. This represents, Folsom Five represents the last segment of our Streetscape Enhancement Project. So this is, has two segments associated with it, that portion from Bradshaw to Horn and from Kilgore to Sunrise. This is widening sidewalks or installing sidewalks on the south side, widening the lanes, bike lanes, median improvements, signal upgrades, and a tremendous amount of paving. So this is currently scheduled to be done in November, has a total project value of 7.4, just over 7.4 million dollars, some of which is coming from Community Enhancement Funds, but the majority is coming from grants in the tune of just over 7 million dollars for this project. So we're excited about this project. It represents the last phase. You'd be getting some, everyone's going to be getting some notifications as in terms of a ribbon cutting associated with this. So we're very excited about wrapping this project up next month. Sunrise Rehab. This again is scheduled to be complete in next month, in November. This is rehabilitation of the street improvement, or the street pavement from Folsom all the way down to White Rock Road. And it includes signal upgrades, median improvements, landscaping, lighting improvements on the west, east side, and a tremendous amount of coordination with the utility companies. We had to move some, upgrade some power poles, so SMUD was involved with this one. And we're actually wrapping up this project in November. But tonight and tomorrow represents kind of the last night of paving, so bear with us. We're almost done with this one. It has a total project value of just under 9 million dollars, of which 1.2 million is coming from Community Enhancement Funds, 517 from grants, and then just over 7.1 million dollars of local funds. We're excited about this one as well.
There was a remarkable amount of work going on at the intersection of Sunrise and Folsom last night, late last night. I was kind of amazed. I think it's, is it both projects? Folsom Boulevard as well as this one, or if it was just maybe the Folsom Boulevard project? I'm not sure. But traffic was shut down, lights, they have light towers all over the place.
Yeah, good, a good comment. We did have a lot of activity. It was part of this project, of the Sunrise. But the Granite, or the Folsom Fire Project was there actually last week doing the signal switchover to the video detection. But yeah, we, it's been a very heavy workload on this project, and especially with the other project kind of tying and working on top of each other since they're at the same intersection. So we're almost there. The Sunrise Boulevard Entry Monument Sign, we are scheduled to be complete this fall. This is at the southwest corner of Bridge Street and Sunrise Boulevard. This is our gateway sign, which welcomes those coming southbound on Sunrise. It's, we worked with the SAC Regional Parks in terms of acquiring an easement to locate that, that sign in that corner. It's currently under construction, and we're hoping it's going to be done, well, by the end of fall, but realistically in November, first part of November. We have a Community Enhancement Funds tied to this project in tune of 175,000 dollars. So a new sign that most people have not seen, but it's tied to the Folsom Boulevard and Streetscape Enhancement. We have a new entry monument sign that's going to be located just east of the intersection of Bradshaw and Folsom Boulevard. On the screen, it's kind of highlighted there in the median by a red box. It's going to be nine feet tall by 14 feet wide, greeting those folks that are coming in eastbound on Folsom Boulevard from Bradshaw, and then thanking them for coming to the city as you're going westbound. So this one is currently in design, but we do anticipate to be done by the, by the fall with construction. This is part of the construction contract is for Folsom Five for Granite. So coming soon, this is where we have some heavy workload on some other projects that are currently under design. We have the 2020-21 Sidewalk Improvement Project. We currently have just over 460, or 460,000 dollars of budget associated with this project that's coming from Community Enhancement Funds and 100,000. Local funds, 50,000, and the CDBG, in the amount of 310,000. Currently have 80 locations that are tied to these improvements, which is a significant amount of locations, considering that on average, our sidewalk improvement project is about 25 locations per year. So the increase in budget has allowed us to put a significant dent into our backlog on the sidewalk improvements, which is currently just over 400,000. improvements, which is currently just over four hundred thousand dollars and, uh, an estimated cost of just over two million dollars. So this represents a good amount of activity on this project. Next is, uh, under design is the Mather Field Road Rehabilitation. So that we're going to, similar to Sunrise Rehab, we're going to rehabilitate Mather from Folsom Boulevard down to International, some signal upgrades, ramp improvements, uh, and some landscaping between the, the on and off ramp at, at, um, and to, uh, Rockingham. So this one has a community enhancement funds of five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and local funds of just under two hundred and, two point five million dollars. We anticipate to be done with design at the end of this calendar year and get ready for a, a spring construction start.
Question on that?
Yep.
Is there going to be a change, um, on going on, uh, Mather Field Road, going into Mather, and then spreads out going to, uh, International? So you only have one lane going into Mather. Is there still going to be one lane?
Good question. Uh, yes, we are going to maintain the same lane configurations. This is primarily just the street re, uh, pavement rehabilitation, um, throughout the entire corridor.
Okay, I'm just curious if that was going to be changed because I'm hoping that the businesses will pick up again maybe next year, at the end of twenty twenty, and, uh, doesn't know if it would be helpful to have two lanes instead of one going into Mather.
Thank you. I'm making note of it, and we'll certainly evaluate that and, and report back and as part of our design.
Thank you.
Next is our twenty twenty residential street rehabilitation project. So this one, um, is a fairly large project. It's primarily within the, uh, the bound by Coloma Road, Cordova Lane, Simfidel, Folsom, and again, Coloma to the west. Uh, it's going to be broken up into three phases. The first phase is going to be made up of the residential collectors as shown in green on the, on the exhibit, uh, that which includes Aramont, Chisela, Chardonnay, and Malaga. So we're currently about ninety percent design on this one and anticipate to have a hundred percent, uh, design by the end of the year and get ready for a spring, uh, construction start. This one has, uh, about six hundred and sixty-two thousand of community enhancement funds with the balance being made up of four point seven, uh, million dollars in local funds.
And if I just may add to this, as we had presented in previous discussions to city council, we do have some significant deferred maintenance associated with our overall citywide roadway no, network. We've identified that some of the roadways built, um, fifteen to seventeen years ago, early on in city incorporation, and some of the roadways that were rehabilitated, uh, early upon, early in, um, city in cityhood, two thousand three, four, and five. We've identified that they are coming in need for additional rehabilitation and the ability to maintain, maintain our entire network citywide is still a significant challenge that we're continuing to work on what the solution for that is.
Thank you, Albert. Um, next project is our Cordova School Zones. We received, uh, just over one point one million dollar grant to do safety enhancement, uh, uh, infrastructure at six of our schools, elementary schools. Those include Ranch of Cordova Elementary, Cordova Guardians Elementary, Cordova Meadows Elementary, White Rock Elementary, Cordova Villa, and Abraham Lincoln. The scope involves, uh, rapid rectangular flashing beacons, bull bouts, high visibility crosswalks, speed feedback signs, um, and additional, uh, curb ramps, uh, at different loc, at different intersections. One of the things that we're doing new on this project that, um, uh, as a result of COVID and our, and our challenges to have out, uh, public meetings, is we're, we're going to roll out, uh, uh, online outreach engagement software or program called MetroQuest. That is going to be rolling out this week, uh, to start soliciting feedback from the residents that are near or around these six school sites, uh, which has a, a very, very robust, uh, reporting function. So we're excited to see that because it might be something, uh, new that we see on all our projects as we solicit input from the residents. So the final project that we have out here for, um, for upcoming is the White Rock Road Widening Project. So this project, as we know, has three phases. The phases are from White Rock to Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald to a half mile east of Ranch Cordova Parkway, and then from that point to the city limits. This project is going to widen the existing road or realign the existing road to a four lane, um, cross section with a, with a raised median, signals at Fitzgerald, Gold Valley, and, uh, future Ranch Cordova Parkway. We're currently at, uh, ninety-five percent design, um, as we finished the design related to the, the Sacramento County Water Agency water line. So we're hoping to get that wrapped up, um, this month so we could get ready to advertise at the end of this calendar year and be under construction for both Phase One and Phase Two in early twenty twenty-one and spring of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one. Now, one of the things that we have, uh, discussed in Public Works is for Phase Two related to the road closure. So we are intending to close the road for six months from just the east side of the, the Business Park, which is east of Lu Young, to approximately the Stericycle, uh, um, business. So there would be a detour for those that are travel east and westbound to the Business Park or to the businesses on White Rock east of the, of the industrial park, uh, that would have to circumvent in terms of, during that six month period. Um, the closure allows us to, uh, reduce our construction overall time as well as improve safety, uh, during that construction activity with the elimination of having live traffic during, during the construction of this road.
So I have a question. Um, I, I still don't understand how, uh, you will accommodate the construction for Rio de Loro.
Councilmember Budge, that's a very good question. We are in coordination with the Rio de Loro development. In fact, what, what, what turns out is that the closure of the road in of itself is, provides a, a bit more flexibility to them. Uh, so we are going to be working with, hand in hand with them to make sure that they maintain their access for construction. One of the other things that, as part of our, uh, construction, we are going to maintain an all-weather road, uh, for public safety that could be used by Rio de Loro as well, uh, during the entire construction or during that entire road closure. Uh, so they, we are working with them to make sure that they have the same accommodations for their construction activities.
So, um, okay, so just to restate that to make sure I understand, it actually could be a benefit to them because their construction trucks will not have the conflict with the residential or other commercial traffic.
And if my, if I may add, as a part of our decision in to, uh, to move forward with a road closure on White Rock Road, we performed significant outreach to stakeholders, um, including businesses, um, along this entire corridor. One of those, um, businesses that we reached out to was Price Walker with Elliot Holmes, and he stated a strong support for this closure.
Well, good. Okay. Um, and I assume, um, Stericycle's on board with it?
We have, in, we've received a general support. Um, there, Stericycle, since they're right at the very end of our, of our, of our closure, um, they do have one of the longer detours associated with this improvement. Um, so, but they did understand the benefits of shortening the overall construction schedule.
I, again, you know, I, I, I know, um, that when you asked for our comments before, I turned in the same comment. Um, the interesting, you know, on the one hand, Stericycle is, um, DTSC is trying to shut them down, but on the other hand, Stericycle trucks are everywhere because of the importance of the service they provide. And, um, um, so if they're good with it, um, okay, I'm just kind of surprised, but, but that's good. Okay? Thank you.
Well, I, can, if I can just go in, I mean, the good's a lot way to the bad, right? If, if this takes an extra six months or a year or whatever, like, like doing it this way, it's the same thing that we had when we did, uh, Douglas was, you know, do you take six months or do you take, you know, eighteen months to do it?
Right.
And it's everyone's life for even longer, so.
Do it efficiently and get it over with.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just pull the beday off and let's get going. I mean, that was, that was one of the, the things I saw on social media when, you know, in March when everything went into lockdown. And, you know, if there was one thing that, that people were really united on, it was fix all the roads now while we're not driving on them, right? Like, this is the perfect time to be disrupting, you know, roads and overpasses and anything because traffic's down. And it's not going to be like that forever.
And look at the price of concrete as a result.
Is it going up?
Apparently, yeah.
There's a lot of signals coming out, too.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
Those are all very good comments, and we're making note of it and make sure we coordinate accordingly with all the property owners and businesses. Um, with that, we'd like to acknowledge some of the project of the years, uh, awards. So pass it back to Director.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. And I wanted to thank Edgar brings a huge amount of expertise to delivering. These projects are extremely complicated, and Edgar brings a lot of expertise to keeping them moving. Edgar also brings a huge amount of passion towards bringing great improvements for the community. So I want to thank Edgar, and I also want to thank our entire team for bringing a lot of expertise and passion also every day. They all work really, really hard, um, to bring these improvements to the community. And I'm excited that, uh, this year, the American Public Works Association has recognized, not one, not two, but actually three projects that our team has delivered to, for this community. And Persephone, if you could play a video for us that the team put together with the help of our, of our communications team.
It's coming, it's coming.
It's loading.
All right.
And we're being patient. Oh, no audio.
Hi, my name's Quaknam, and I'm a civil engineer with the city of Ranch of Cordova. And we're so excited to receive the award for the Chase Drive Coloma Road Plaza Project. This project began in two thousand sixteen and completed late two thousand nineteen. The improvements included new curb gutter sidewalks, signs, striping, traffic modifications, including landscape enhancements and an expanded plaza. And we want to give special thanks to Mark Thompson Associates, Martin General Engineering, and Salibur and Associates.
Good morning. My name is Dalia Fodle. I'm a senior civil engineer for the city of Ranch of Cordova Public Works Department. Uh, we are happy and excited to receive this APWA Project of the Year Award for twenty twenty for emergency repair project. This project is located in the American River Parkway, which is a gem of the community. And it is, uh, an area that is frequently used by pedestrians and bikers. The project started in late twenty eighteen when some, uh, the city started noticing that the slope along the original bike trail was eroding, and the bike trail stuff started to get damaged. At that point, we, uh, communicated with Sacramento County Regional Parks, despite thinking of solutions to the erosion, uh, and potentially relocating or rerouting the bike trail. This project was made possible, uh, by collaborating with Sacramento County Regional Parks, our main project partner, and also our project team, which includes Wes Yost and Associates, who, uh, supported with the design of the project, Docking Engineering for their support with environmental permitting for the project, and Coastline Water Resources, uh, they supported the construction of the project as well as construction oversight.
Good morning. I'm Steve Harriman with the City Ranch of Cordova Department of Public Works. We are here today at the Bear Hollow Stormwater Basin. Uh, and this is a location where we did a project to plant five hundred and seventeen native species trees. Um, we planted mostly oak trees.
And some walnut trees.
Uh, our main partner on this project was the Sacramento Tree Foundation, which is of course associated with SMUD. Uh, and I really want to give a, a huge thank you to the folks at the Tree Foundation for, uh, organizing this project. Winning the APWA Award is a fantastic acknowledgement. Uh, and it's really going to be helpful going forward. I also want to thank APWA for, uh, for giving us this award. It's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Nice job. All right, great presentation.
Well, we're.
Great awards. For good work. Cyrus, is there something you wanted to add?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, echo, I know, I, I think they still have some final comments that they want to make, the team. But after they've done, I just wanted to make one final comment.
Okay. Go ahead, guys.
All right. So just a quick recap. So the, we did get three awards under three different categories. Uh, transportation categories for Chase Coloma, uh, Chase, Chase Drive Coloma Road, emergency repair for the American River Repair Parkway, American River Parkway Repair Project, and of course, the, the Bear Hollow five hundred plus native trees planted at Bear Hollow Basin. So just in summary, we just wanted to highlight some of the investments that the city has done in, in fiscal year nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. Uh, we had a total investment in, in nineteen twenty, um, or nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty of twenty-one thou, a million, six hundred and twelve thousand, of which, uh, two point, just over two point three million came from community enhancement funds, seven, just over seven point one million in grant funds, and just over twelve million in local funds. We're projected right now with the active projects for the twenty twenty-one, uh, projects of just over twenty five million dollars in total investment, of which nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand's coming from community enhancement funds, just over seven, ten point seven million dollars in grant funds, and thirteen point four million in local funds. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thanks again. Cyrus, you have a closing comment?
Uh, yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our Public Works Team, Edgar and Albert. Thank you for a great presentation. And, uh, the one acknowledgement that I want to make is, uh, that we were in the middle of all of this significant and, uh, complicated projects because these are, as you can imagine, when you have, uh, federal funding involved and, uh, other partners, whether it's utilities or, um, other agencies, their project can be very complex. And then in the midst of all of that, we were, of course, faced the COVID crisis, and, uh, um, many, um, many organizations, many of our consultant teams, uh, had to, went to a completely different mode of operation. So I, I sincerely appreciate the work they have done. This is not, this has been a major undertaking by our Public Works Team, and I sincerely appreciate the great work they've done. And we still have a lot on, on the books as you, as they have mentioned, and, uh, twenty twenty-one, it will also be a very busy year. So thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Very good. Yeah, that is impressive. I'm so glad, uh, you presented in that way so our community can see how much progress we've made this year and how much is coming for, uh, for next year. Any other kinds of comments?
This is receive and file.
Pardon me?
This is receive and file.
It is just an update.
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful.
Any public comments on this matter?
No, but I think Edgar's, I think Edgar's buttons are buttoned.
Good work, Edgar.
Yeah, well, I, I'd also say, I think, uh, we're finally at the point where, I know Cyrus is still the city manager, but Public Works has really, you know, improved since, since Albert's, uh, taken the helm there, too.
And, and I, and I have to say, I said.
I think we're finally at the point where, where sure Cyrus is running the whole thing, but, but, but Albert, you're doing a really good job there. Keep it up.
And I have to say, I fully agree with your statement, Mr. Jerry.
We have a great mentor in our city, in our city manager, so thank you.
That's great. All right, any other comments or jokes? Very good. We are moving on to item 16.3. If clerk would read that subject.
The subject for 16.3 is a resolution joining the California Community Housing Agency Joint Powers Authority.
All right. Staff report for this item.
And we have a public comment, so I need to see if Jordan, Jordan Moss, I think, is for this project. I don't think it's a public comment. I think they're just wanting to, need to move them over. Never mind.
Well, we're going to do that after the staff presentation, right?
It's not a public comment. They just wanted to be moved over. They're part of this discussion.
Oh, okay.
So the person presenting on this item is Stefan. Stefan, I just moved you over. And I also moved, I just also moved over Jordan. And I'm looking for Allison.
Jordan, Jordan, is Allison going to join us tonight?
Yes, she's here.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes, she is here.
Oh, perfect, okay. We found her.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, well, since we have everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stefan Heisler. I'm the Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova, presenting tonight this new funding model for your discussion. Let's see, Persephone, do I click for slides or?
Yes, Stefan, you should have control.
Okay, thank you. So again, good evening. So the purpose of this presentation is to present this new financing model, CalCHA, that funds middle-income housing and to receive authorization from our council to pursue this model or receive additional direction. Here to answer any questions that you have are Jordan Moss and Allison Arnold from the Catalyst Housing Group, who run, basically run this CalCHA program. So just to be clear upfront, authorization tonight from city council would allow the city manager to become an additional member of the California Community Housing Agency Joint Powers Authority. Secondly, would support CalCHA's issuance of academic bonds for the acquisition or production of middle-income rental housing. And I'm going to get into all the details here in a couple of slides. And then thirdly, authorize the city manager to execute purchase option agreement with CalCHA to acquire or develop middle-income rental housing as a benefit. So just an overview of the CalCHA agency. CalCHA was formed in January 2019, focusing on acquiring or developing housing for middle-income households, really focusing on that 60% to 120% area median income, or otherwise the low to moderate income categories. The JPA was created in Kings County, but membership now includes over a dozen California cities and counties. Additional members, that's a defined term, hence the capitalization, have no control over the JPA, however, they are entirely shielded from any kind of financial or legal liability. And then Catalyst Housing Group, which we have Jordan and Allison from here tonight, provide the program and asset management. So getting into the CalCHA financing model, the model uses essential housing revenue bonds issued by CalCHA to finance the acquisition or development of middle-income housing. So the key features of that are low interest, tax-exempt bonds issued at 100% of the cost of the project. The bonds are, are 30 years and fully amortizing. The properties that are acquired using these bonds utilize a full property tax exemption, but not including direct assessments. And then there is no additional public subsidy required other than the property tax exemption. So no additional state funding leverage and no local subsidy or match requirements. There are no equity investments. However, the projects must provide, to be eligible for the taxes and bonds, they must provide a public benefit. And I'm going to go over these last two bullet points in more detail on the next two slides. But basically, the rents are restricted to qualifying income and all surplus funds go to the underlying jurisdiction through a purchase option agreement. So the rent restrictions, as I mentioned before, are targeting that 60% to 120% AMI group. So a third of the units are reserved for the moderate income, so between 100 and 120% AMI, a third of the units are, you know, 100, are between 80 and 100 AMI, and a third of the units are between 60 to 80% AMI, which is that low income category. So they are really a mixed income product. And just sort of context as far as what 60% to 120% AMI means in Rancho Cordova today, it's roughly about $50,000 to $100,000 per year for a household of four. And that's roughly. So rents are limited to increases of either the lesser of 4% or the state mandated rent limit based on the household's income. There's also a zero displacement policy so that over-income tenants are allowed to stay, but as original tenants turn over, the best effort they're provided to match new tenants with the above, match new tenants with the income restrictions. After the bonds are paid, the city has discretion to either maintain the affordability or convert a product to market rates. So a little more detail on the purchase option agreement. So with each CalCHA property, a purchase option agreement is executed between the city and CalCHA. The purchase option allows the city to purchase the property during years 15 to 30 of the bond's term, and the property would be acquired in as is conditioned with any or all faults. The city can transfer option with approval from the owner, which I believe would be CalCHA. And also, the city has the option to choose not to purchase property. In such a case, CalCHA would sell the property and direct all the process, or surplus proceeds would come to the city. The price of the option is equal to the sum of the existing debt encumbrances and amounts due to other parties to the transaction. The biggest one there is the remaining balance of the bond. And the price, of course, can be reduced by assuming existing project debt or applying other revenue.
Stefan, would the city have the right of first refusal in, in the case of, of the owner wanting to sell prior to the term of her right to end?
Sure, so owner, the, and Jordan, feel free to say this if I'm wrong, but the owner is CalCHA, and I believe the city would be the only one having that purchase option agreement. And if, if, so we could, we would have the option to, to take that option to purchase the property. And if we didn't, then I believe, they would then sell the property, but the proceeds would still come to the city.
Is, is the, is the option predetermined at the time of acquisition? When you say option, I, I, I feel like it's, I'm, today I buy it and in 15 years it's this price and the city decides in 15 years if we want to pay that price. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, basically. But that, we won't know the exact price when we sign that agreement. I mean, it'll, it'll be, it'll be what the remaining balance of the bond plus any other encumbrances included in that.
So there's no, there's no market evaluation done at the time of sale? I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
There would be, but the price of the sale is the sum of the existing debt.
At the time of sale? Okay, correct. That makes sense. I got it. I got it. Thank you.
That's actually a bonus slide that snuck in there to repeat. I've already covered that. So this slide, this slide is actually just the table of our regional housing needs allocation. So you can see in this table, I displayed the very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income units that we've been allotted for the current housing element cycle. You can see that the ones that we struggle the most with in producing naturally would be the very low and the low category. You can see some of the moderate housing units have been able to be built by themselves without any public or city involvement. But you can see, still see that there is pretty substantial unit count remaining in the moderate and the low category. So to summarize, I know I went through a lot of really detailed stuff, but basically to summarize, this is a tool, an additional tool, that would give us more flexibility for, for producing mixed income and middle-income housing developments. It comes with a pretty large upside and a potential windfall if the property is sold to the city. It maybe, maybe it's hard to determine because it's looking 15 to 30 years in the future. But even if, you know, even if that number was zero, there's still pretty good benefits in that we're providing mixed income housing at no public subsidy costs to create it. So, staff does recommend adopting the resolution. It's authorized the city manager to join the CalCHA JPA and to negotiate next few purchase option agreements and support issuance of CalCHA bonds. If approved, the next steps are there below. So Catalyst Housing Group will begin to identify suitable properties for acquisition or development. Of course, the city might be helping facilitate that as well. And then, then the next step would be the city to negotiate and execute any purchase option agreements with, of course, full discretion to decline any proposed project. CalCHA would then acquire or develop and then own, operate, and manage with absolutely no liability or responsibility for the city. And then, of course, if a new development is contemplated, the project would follow the, the city's normal permitting and approval processes. And of course, any additional city involvement after tonight with land or funding would require further council approval. So with that, I'll open it up to any council discussion or questions that you may have for myself or Jordan Moss or Allison.
I think this sounds like a really interesting idea and obviously Stefan, I'm, I'm assuming you're in the conversations about the Civic Center, the housing, the multifamily sites at least there. But I know, just in talking with Related, they were looking for additional unique opportunities. I don't know if this is, could be a component of it. Could you use this in, in a mixed income where you had market rate that makes you very low as a part of this and then still have this as financing for like that missing middle?
So, so yes and no. It's a little complicated. And this is really trying to meet that missing middle between 60% to 120% AMI. There are as many, as you know, there aren't as many other funding sources for this missing kind of middle income property trench. So, so I don't believe CalCHA can go below 60% AMI and it cannot go above 120% AMI.
Right, but it's, it's.
Hey, Stefan.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, is it okay if I jump in here quickly? This is Jordan Moss of Catalyst. Thank you. Well, thanks, thanks for the time. I just wanted to point out, Stefan, we are actually pursuing an interesting opportunity right now in a city in Southern California that requires a significant renovation of this specific property in addition to setting 20% of the units aside at 50% of median income. And so, you know, more of sort of a typical 80/20 mixed income, Lytec-type transaction. We are, actually, we've gone to our council at OREC and we've gotten them to opine on what we can do with the balance of the units. And we are going to have the subset there, the 20 at 50. We are going to have a bunch of units in that middle income at 80, 100, and 120, but we are going to have some really high-end market rate units there as well. Just the, I can't say too much about this specific project, but because of what it is, where it is, we're effectively looking at the overall affordability that we're creating here. And even with, you know, some units at market, we're still going to massively move the needle from an affordability standpoint because of the units at 50%, 80, 100, and 120. And so there is a lot of flexibility with the program. When you work with Sidlac and TCAC, for example, everything is prescriptive. You have to have units at 50 or 60% of AMI. This is more facts and circumstances based, and so our tax partner at OREC has to be satisfied that we are truly creating much-needed affordable housing and lessening the burdens of government through the creation of this middle-income housing. But it is very flexible.
Okay. Yeah, so that, I mean, that, that's kind of the scenario that, at least I was exploring a couple of weeks ago, but there were a lot of questions around, you know, to, to get a project off the ground, you know, would you, would you sell like penthouse of multifamily, right? Using that to finance, you know, kind of normal market rate and still getting into some TCAC or something else. So to me, this seems like you could get, instead of having kind of very high-income owners and buyers and renters and very low income and nothing in between, that you might actually get something where you're kind of addressing every level of the income ladder in some way, or, or getting a lot closer to, you know, when it's 80/20 where it's, you know, just straight wealthy, you know, people that are working in DST and whatnot, and then 20% are, you know, maybe bus drivers and librarians and, and very lower income in there without, you know, kind of, again, like I said, that missing middle. So I, I think this sounds fascinating and something that we should jump on.
Other comments?
Not to mention, this, this would help us likely, like was pointed out, with land acquisition, which traditionally has been our own capital solely to do that.
Yeah, I would mention for what it's worth, not only does it work well on the development side and are we transitioning, we've, we've done about 800 million of this over the past year and a half, all acquisitions. And we wanted to prove the model with existing tangible cash flowing assets. And now that we've done that, we're pretty focused on development, not only in land acquisition like you just referenced, but also in partnering with public entities that already own land, surplus land, where we may ground lease the land from them, build on it, still give that purchase option agreement to the municipality so they get to retain ownership of the land the entire time. And as soon as 15 years after we build something, that asset may revert to the municipality. At that point, you can just cancel the ground lease and own something fee simple. So we're responding to various RFPs with structures like that.
So I will move that we approve the resolution that authorizes the city manager to execute the three activities.
Second.
Most are made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yeah.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
That brings us item 16.4. Subject of this item is green zone nomination for the Sacramento Area Council of Government's Green Means Go Pilot Program. So we have a staff report on this item?
Yep, me again.
Stefan, up again. All right, go for it.
So quick thank you to Jordan and Allison. Appreciate your, your input on this, on the last item. Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova, here to present the Green Means Go. I do have some slides for this, so I'm sure they're going to be coming up here in just a moment.
I'm frozen. It's going to be just a second.
Okay. Well, not to add to any suspense, but they're not very exciting slides. A little bit of text, a little bit of formatting.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, Stefan, you should be able to control the screen now.
Yep, thank you. All right. So quick, quick overview of the Green Means Go program. Last year, we did pass a resolution in support of SECOG for the Green Means Go program to go after state funding, which wasn't as successful last year as they would like, would have liked it to be. So here we are again, making a second attempt at it. But this is the SECOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Government's Initiative Greenhouse Gas Reduction Pilot Program. As part of their regional effort to secure additional state funding for particularly greenhouse gas reduction projects in the Sacramento region, really trying to meet the region's goal of greenhouse gas reductions given by the California Research Board. This program requires local jurisdictions to designate green zones by resolution, which would then be eligible for grant funding that SECOG receives from the state for greenhouse gas reduction programs. So the qualifications for a green zone program, they must meet at least the two criteria there on top. It must be within infill areas as designated by the SECOG 2020 Metropolitan Transportation Plan slash Sustainable Community Strategy, and they must be planned for growth or considered for increased growth. There are some additional factors to be considered, including current VNT or vehicle miles traveled, access to transit, helping jobs, housing balance, located in an environmental justice for disadvantaged community, access to high opportunity areas, or access to jobs, education, services, and transit. So last year, staff put together a quick draft of the green zone, and this year we've refined it a little bit more. It includes most of the infill areas, which is basically the whole spectrum of this map that you can see of the City of Rancho Cordova. that you can see of the City of Rancho Cordova. The green zone is areas where staff are proposing to make the green zone in Rancho Cordova. It is limited, as I mentioned, to the infill areas. This proposed green zone includes all of the Fulton Boulevard specific plan area. It also includes all of the major office, commercial, and industrial areas, as well as all public rights waived on the major thoroughfares throughout Rancho Cordova. One thing that's missing primarily is built-out areas that are single-family homes and multi-family homes. And because they're already built out, it's doubly hard to plan for increased growth in those areas.
Did you say that again, Stefan? You cannot use single-family home areas?
They can be used, but it's hard to make the case that we would be looking to increase growth in single-family areas that are already built out. Not that we'd make the case, but we're not proposing to here, but we could, that could be one thing that we could change.
But multifamily parcels along Fulton Boulevard can be included?
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, they can be, you know, if we want to make the case and include some more of the multifamily areas in the infill area of the city, we certainly can. We have included all of the Fulton Boulevard areas, we know that that is definitely a targeted area for growth.
So my question had to do with that first of the minor factors to be considered. The one that you explained has to do with being located in an area where you have average or lower than average vehicle miles traveled either today or in 2040. And the question is, in normal times, how can you, how can we make the case that places like Zimfandel and Kilgore and White Rock are lower than average VMT when we have a traffic jam basically from Highway 50 to International?
So VMT, as I believe CACOG calculates it, is looking at what residents in that area, how many miles they would travel daily. And then they average that across the whole CACOG region. So if you're within that 50% VMT, so you might still have plenty of traffic jams, but because maybe your commute is maybe five miles instead of 15 miles, you're still adding to the congestion of the road, but you're not going as far.
So does that mean walking to work is a good thing or not?
It depends on your neighbors and how far they're driving to work. So of course, walking to work is a good thing, and that'll reflect in how many vehicle miles traveled that you travel. But then of course, you know, looking at what your neighborhood. The map that CACOG uses for this doesn't use census tracts, it doesn't use neighborhoods. It uses hexagons. So they've kind of parceled out the whole region by hexagons, and I'm sure they have a methodology for it. But it's not quite as easy to describe in ways that we usually describe our city.
I don't know, it sounds kind of fuzzy math to me. So, okay, so if we need a resolution, I'm happy to move the resolution designating our Green Means Go green zone.
Second.
Stefan, I'm wondering, streets like Chase Drive, you know, where we would love to add some infrastructure along there, perhaps creating a class one bike trail that connects to the McRiver Parkway on the landscaping area owned by the school district, would it make sense to include that project or Silverborn Farms in our green zone?
Yes, yeah, that would be fine to add or include. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if there is a potential project on the school district property, we would want to make sure to include the school district parcel as well.
Which is not right now.
No, it's not, you're correct, it's not right now. And I'm not clear necessarily with the city attorney whether we can maybe make some slight amendments to this map here tonight. But I'm happy to come back in a couple of weeks with an amended map.
Okay. Yeah, that kind of jumps out at me. I'm looking at this map to see if there's further areas, you know, where we'd have high hopes of achieving something but are looking for funding.
There's also, and I apologize, there's also an option, once council approves this map, one of the other actions in this, maybe I'm not including it in the presentation, but we are authorizing the city manager to make small amendments to the map as well. So if council wishes to approve it tonight, and then we can definitely take feedback and amend it before this CACOG.
That probably makes sense because we're all aware that there were some additions proposed, but most of those additions, except for the Chase Drive one that David brought up, were in residential areas that I should say are already built out and the residents there would not be looking for more densification.
That's correct.
Could you bring back up that map again?
Absolutely. It's hard to put a map like this on a PowerPoint. So the attachments to the item was the PDF map that we can zoom in too much closer, but...
Yeah, the attached map and the staff report's pretty good.
Okay, well, I'll hold it there.
And actually, the color contrast is quite good.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, it worked.
Yeah, if there are any additional comments or parcels we'd like to include, you're welcome to email the city manager after tonight to have those included.
Are the white parts in the, no, that's not what that is, because now I see the air bases. I'm confused as to what, I can't even identify that. Are those the multifamily sites next to the Kaiser facility across the street from the VA hospital, kind of in the middle there that are white and not eligible for this, even though there's, you know, that?
No, those are the large, those are the large office parcels that are along Old Claserville Road.
Not going that direction, really?
Yeah. The black line on the...
No, that's, that's to go north and south.
Yeah, okay, so that's...
Is that Rootier? No, Rootier's over to the left there. What?
Are those the large apartment complexes sort of in a row right there?
Is that the big set of multifamily?
The Peak Commons, um...
Yeah.
The black line is, the black line is White Rock and the gray line is Gateway Drive.
Yeah, so then, so like that Kinder site that's there that's in gray, that couldn't be considered at some point? I think even Kaiser approached us about housing there maybe someday.
No, yeah, the Kaiser site is included.
It is included, yeah.
So what is that behind it?
The gray one is California Jazz.
Right.
Ah, okay. Well, no, but isn't that the green part too? Isn't that the housing right there?
No, the two parcels in the curve of White Rock.
Oh, goodness, I have it there.
No, that's the Kaiser and this is the vacant lot.
I'm holding up the staff report. I'll look at it closer. I need to stop, I need to stop trying to read it here.
Because the VA is right here and Fumoyer is right here.
If only you had your laser pointer and I could see it, I believe you.
Oh, it's running around on my screen.
I don't know if you can see my screen.
Yeah, Linda, how are you doing?
I can't see you.
I know, so, but mine's running around.
That's for Stefan.
Okay, I see it, okay, I got it now. I see what you're talking about. When you zoom in, you can see the housing, the housing units opposed to the multifamily. Okay, so the Kaiser site is it, okay, good, excellent.
See, I'd propose the amendment to, for Chase Drive, school parcels abutting Chase Drive, and Silverborn Farm parcels with the, I guess the park parcels there as well. That's quite a big addition, actually, but not that many parcels overall.
Well, and the reality is, I mean, the school and a couple of other things aren't going to change what they are, but, you know, there could be additional services that is part of this that you might think makes sense to include connectivity out to Soil Board, out into the Parkway would make a lot of sense anyways.
Yeah, and getting people off of the Parkway and towards our job center or our neighborhoods is a big deal.
Yeah. No, I know, I remember one of the things I really impressed upon, again, talking about the Griffin-Twinerton conversation, was, you know, we've been talking about at some point, would there be some sort of clinical services at a civic center? Yet we have, the only free clinic in town is going to be, the Heritage Trail connects the one free clinic that we have in town to the Civic Center site. And figuring out how do we use the alternative mode of one or something like that to get people from that light rail site to our clinic site and back, and how do those sites complement each other?
Yeah. All right, council, are we good on this one?
Yeah, it's great stuff.
Linda, I think you had a motion, I forgot the second, unfortunately.
I think Donald did.
I believe I did too.
Yeah, I think that's right. Motion and second. If there's no further discussion, we can do a roll call.
Before we vote, can I acknowledge Donald Childs' public comment?
Oh, I thought you did already, okay.
That's okay.
No, I did.
Oh, that's, okay.
So Donald Childs did submit a public comment. I just wanted to communicate to you that that was emailed to all of you. Copies have been placed for the public in the back of the room. He did share his concern about some of the parcels that he felt were excluded, but he also wanted to share his support for the proposed green zone and the Green Means Go Pilot Program. But you have that, so thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, and roll call.
Mr. Mayor, before we take the roll call, I just want to be clear that Ms. Budget's motion includes the amendments. So for the record, we want to be sure that...
Oh, sure. Sure. And I'm sure Donald is in particular.
I was about to say that, yes. Linda is right that I implied that.
Roll call is Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yeah.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
That brings us, thank you, Stefan. That brings us item 16.5. The subject is Multifamily Design Booklets, Preliminary Design Discussion. And I wonder who's up?
Again. We have pushed good momentum going, let's hope we can keep it going.
I think the motion is Stefan gets the morning off tomorrow. Because he's working so late.
My babysitter would appreciate that too. All right, we have a couple other members joining, of the team, joining us for this presentation, so see if you let me know when we have it all ready.
I just moved them over.
Great, awesome, okay. Neil, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, and Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, hi.
All right, thank you for joining us from the East Coast tonight.
I'm not on the East Coast, just Mary is.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council again. Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. Next, our item presenting is the Multifamily Pre-approved Design Booklet. So tonight, focusing on the presentation of the draft booklet outline, stress put on that, outline, and the architectural styles. And I'm going to take control over Persephone's screen here in a second. There we go, okay, great. So again, the purpose of tonight, and to bring you back up to speed with this project, the pre-approved design booklet, pattern book, pre-approved design guideline, kind of going under all three names at this point. But again, this project is funded through our SB2 planning grant fund, fully funded through that grant. And the purpose of the project is to create this set of pre-approved design guidelines or pattern books that would allow developers to choose, and if this route versus the normal design review path, but using this route would create a pre-approved route of our design guidelines, allowing them to receive a ministerial or staff-level approval for their design review. And then also through that, you know, gaining the certainty of a project that would receive approval and also kind of having a better idea of the timeline of that approval. So tonight, we're here to present a draft of the outline of the documents, as well as the selected architectural styles for your discussion. So a quick agenda for tonight, team introductions, summary of the main points for discussion, and no action tonight, but hopefully a robust discussion. And then the presentation of the draft design booklet, and then plenty of opportunity for council feedback and discussion. Okay, so our team here presenting tonight are Neil Paton from Torrey Gallus and Partners, as well as Mary Butcher from Torrey Gallus. Rogelio won't be joining us this evening, and then myself from City Staff. I'm not sure why it's taking a little bit longer to change slides, but we'll get there. So the main points for, make sure I didn't miss a slide here. Oh, it's kind of slow. Okay, so the main points for discussion tonight, looking at this pre-approved design guideline approach, we want to know if council is comfortable with that as an appropriate method or strategy to provide staff-level design review approvals specifically for multifamily projects. Again, this project is focused solely on multifamily projects. The design guideline components, again, this is part of the documents, are there any components in these design guidelines that you'll see in the outline that we should pay more or less attention to? And then the seven architectural styles that will be presented tonight, definitely hopeful for feedback whether there are any missing architectural styles that should be included, or if you see any here tonight that are included that should be removed. And then also a point for discussion whether architectural styles should be specified in this document at all. And if I can go to the next slide, this might be a problem, actually. Persephone, do you have any feedback on how to, let's do the slides faster?
I'll try stopping and starting, we'll see if that works.
Okay, yeah, because there's a lot of slides, but I know we're going to go through them very quick.
Well, a lot of, yeah, a lot of them we can skip over because I really, I really think it's obviously too much detail to discuss this evening. And perhaps some of the council have had an opportunity to look at this material, I don't know.
It could just because the slideshow is so large.
Let's, I do want to talk about, oops.
Okay.
Want to talk about that last page?
I'm going back to it. So Neil, I've got it, so if you want me to change the slide, let me know.
Sure, okay, can we go back to the table of contents? And this is, this is just an idea?
This is probably the largest presentation we've ever loaded onto Zoom at a council meeting yet, online.
Stefan, this is Persephone.
Well, so I'm breaking Zoom, I think.
I think I'm going to just advance the slides for you guys, so it'll go a little bit faster. Just let me know when you're ready for me to change them.
All right, go for it, yep.
Yeah, can we go back to page, oh.
Sorry, give me a second, give me one second. Okay, which page are we going back to?
Uh, the second page.
Go back, go back.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying.
That would be, yeah.
Okay.
It's not letting me go back.
Now we're going forward.
This one?
There we go.
Okay.
This one.
Back, ah, perfect. So in trying to kind of synthesize what the city is trying to achieve, we thought that the way to do this would be to talk a little bit about the building types themselves, what types of buildings are pre-approved, and what those characteristics of those types might be. In general, these are characteristics that would work toward walkability, sustainability, pedestrian-friendly design, that kind of thing. sustainability, pedestrian-friendly design, that kind of thing. And that might include things like the way the fronts meet the sidewalk, some of the streetscapes that go along with that. The maximum length of a facade increment might be. These are all things that impact how you perceive walking down the street. How the general public perceives these buildings. And then we would have a set of pre-approved architectural styles. And while it's impossible to put every possible variation of a style out, you can give a kind of flavor for how these styles are to be put together. And even provide reference books for architects to look at, which might be thought of as the kind of handbook of a particular style, one or another. So was somebody saying something?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So having said that, let's go forward. And I, I don't really want to focus on the building types today, because I think those are still evolving. So I want to go way through, way through this and go to chapter three. So that's gonna be a lot of pages, yeah.
Are you, are you gonna go to the styles, architectural styles?
Yeah, I want to go to styles.
Okay.
Because I think that's the part that's the most.
Right in there.
Well, these are Gatewood, these are, now, yeah.
One more.
Got it, okay. So what we did here, and obviously there's no language here yet, is identify what we've called, we've identified seven styles that we think might be appropriate. Now, this doesn't mean that these styles are currently represented in Rancho Cordova. Because quite frankly, aren't that many buildings of the scale that would be in Rancho Cordova. So we're looking really at the greater Sacramento area, and even northern California, as a kind of area to look for. And these are seven. Now, actually, we're only been asked to, I think, do four or five. So we might eliminate a couple of these. Two of these are really kind of in the contemporary, ones we're calling California contemporary, and another we're calling disciplined modern. To us, they mean different things, and we'll describe them, but they're two versions of that. The Art Modern is also, some people call Art Deco. Spanish Mission, which while not that popular in Rancho, Cordova is, can be found in northern California. The Craftsman Style, something that we're calling Warehouse Vernacular. Again, owing to some of the buildings near the train yards in Sacramento. Mercantile Vernacular, which really speaks to the kind of old-fashioned downtown buildings. So, so those are some of the ones we've considered. Next. I'm not gonna go through each of these in detail, but I want to go through how it might work. So I imagine we would start with a page that might have images of the buildings of that style, next. An overview of that style, what it was about, next. And then, the method for composing a building. There's a sort of addition of parts and subtraction of parts. And what this does is, is provide a kind of process for architects to follow to achieve that design. Now I'll tell you frankly upfront, a lot of architects would chase at this, will chase at this. But again, they don't have to do this. This is for a pre-approved streamlined process. So, you know, I think that's the key there. Most architects generally hate being told what to do. It's just a fault of our education. Next. Some examples of that particular, in this case, the Art Deco, Art Modern style, next. Now, I know this is getting in the weeds, but it won't be in the weeds for architects. These are a few typical wall sections to describe how to do this. There, again, there are a million ways of doing this, but this gives a sense of the level of detail, of materiality, of wall thickness that is expected in this style. It is not to say you must have a detail that looks like any one of the things on this page, but you must have a richness in your details that would create a similar kind of impact or effect. Next. And again, a collection of buildings that use that particular style. To show a kind of range of opportunities, range of possibilities. Next. Keep going, this one's one that's not really complete. Go to the next, next. Here's just another example, this is Spanish Mission style. Next. And again, this is, we start again with the idea of the massing, the addition of elements, and then the subtraction of elements. And each one of these styles, this is a really fundamental thing, because it goes to how these, the essence of these styles. What makes one different from another.
Uh, also, from a staff perspective, you know, looking at this step-by-step process, would be how staff could be able to determine whether this style has been met or not met.
That's really a great point. And I do want to say this, I know that there was an idea originally that you would be able to pre-approve, this would be like drawings, you could, they're already approved, nobody has to review anything. When you get into buildings of this scale, that is impossible. Because every site is different, every program, every developer will have a slightly different program, how they do their units, where they get their windows from. So you really have to, in a sense, lay out a strategy for the applicants, more than the actual, this is the building. Next. And again, you see examples of the Spanish Mission style at three stories and at five stories, next. Wildly different. We're not actually suggesting the Alamo there, but where the, where the essence comes from. The images in the middle, I think, are the ones that are the most applicable here.
And again, additional detail for staff, when we're looking at whether it meets the style or not, kind of be examples of what we'll be looking at.
Yes, exactly. But it, but there will be judgment. There's no way of getting around that. Next. Again, another one, this one happens to be the Craftsman one. In so many of these styles, you know, it's funny, Craftsman was a style that was really applicable to one and two-story buildings. And so it immediately becomes an interesting problem when you blow it up to four stories, let's say. Because it just wasn't done in that, so here's a great example, next. And again, you see that same idea, the massing, the roof forms in this case, use of dormers, the use of additive elements, next. This can become very complex, to the point where some of these look like ski lodges, but, okay. Next. But they can also be simplified, as you see here. Again, the use of very different kinds of details that really get to the heart of this style, the use of overhangs, really big overhangs with brackets, becomes an important element here, next. Other examples. Next. So this is one, you know, this is the idea that I want to live in a lost building, right? And so this is really a lost building, next. It's the sort of industrial aesthetic, but, you know, turned into a new building. It's the idea of a frame, of a structural frame becomes the dominant piece here. So that's what you see, the use of a frame, because these were all about their, these are buildings that were built to hold a lot of things. Whether they were warehouses or department stores, next. The use of sometimes large windows, with windows that were broken up into little panes, which is a really beautiful way to get detail. Sometimes with the addition of a little bit of detail to give it some oomph, say on the column, or maybe an arch at the top. Next. So the same idea, these can become very glassy, as you see the top left. Some of these are literally renovated buildings, but others are brand new. And you probably won't, wouldn't guess which ones were which, actually. Next. What we're calling the Mercantile Vernacular. So this is the classic ground floor retail, upper floor office, or loft, or, you know, sometimes turned into housing these days. This would be the kind of building that was built in the early 20th century in every city in America. It's similar in many ways to the lost buildings, to the vernacular, sort of industrial vernacular, but usually sort of smaller windows, operable windows. Next. So also a frame, but usually a really big emphasis on the ground floor, and a division of kind of base, middle, and top. Usually the ground floor is very different than the upper floors. Next. So again, you see how it's, you know, how different heights can be created, next. Again, the idea of the detail. Next.
Sorry, Neil, I may interrupt here. So you can kind of get the general gist of, I think, what the outline of the document we're proposing.
Exactly, yeah. I was gonna end here, too.
Okay, good. I'll let you end then. Go ahead.
What Stefan said. This is the general gist of the document. Really, we wanted to hear your thoughts about this. I really didn't want to get too far down the road without hearing your direction to us. So I think with that, we can sort of call it.
Yeah, sounds good. Persephone, if you could bring us back to, I think it's slide number four, that, the main points for discussion. And then happy to open it up to council for questions and feedback now.
Stefan.
Yeah?
Well, I had the, I had the opportunity to talk to Stefan this afternoon. And I'm afraid I think this is completely premature, premature conversation. From my perspective, this should have been a workshop. I really, really, I didn't get beyond the second page of this because I'd never read such bureaucratic language. This is worse than form-based coding. I, there's really absolutely nothing in this book that any normal person could understand. I, I'm surprised that the massing process pages are in there. I can't think of any reason we should tell an architect the process they should use to design a building. The pictures, you know, we always tell home builders, don't show us pretty pictures of something you don't want to build here. And the vast majority of those pictures look like they came from the east coast and belong in places with much more density than we have or ever aspire to. And in most, and they look like they belong in snow country. They are not buildings designed or built for our nine months of hospitable weather in northern California. And then, and then the hilarious page that's got the Alamo, and Mission San Jose, and San Javier from Tucson, and what must be a fort down on Galveston Island or something. It just, I don't, there were really only like three pages that were in the slightest bit relevant to our weather, or our lifestyle, or our aspirations for our built environment in Rancho Cordova. And we do want it to go, we do want to be able to use four and five, and perhaps more story buildings, similar to VDX. But when you talk about, there's a page about townhouses. When you talk about townhouses, we have an award-winning best example of townhouses right here at Capital Village. And it could easily have said, we'd like to have more townhouses that look like this, just in different architectural styles or in different colors. When you talk about high-rise apartments, VDX is a remarkably attractive building, even though we know some people who don't like it. But that's the kind of goal we should be looking for. Our, our perspective on this should have been to list the goals that we have for the built environment on our, in our multi-family communities. And then potentially some architectural styles that fit the area. The one building in those seven architectural styles that really fits is the Spanish Mission Building. And it's because somebody, two years ago, built a building that's a carbon copy of that down at Sixteenth and Q Street. I just, it just, I was trying to describe to Stefan the perfectly gorgeous neighborhood that we visited outside of Nashville. And four of us went, because I'm relatively certain Donald was there.
I was.
Okay, so they contracted, and the old Civic Airport property in Austin did the same thing. They did a very specific pattern guideline of what they were looking for in terms of goals. No building side by side should look alike. Here are a variety of architectural features that you could add to these buildings. We want to see, we want to see articulation, we want to see porches. And then they contracted with eight different home builders. They did the same thing in Austin. Eight different home builders. And, and instead of, instead of the neighborhood belonging to one builder, and this neighborhood is another builder, and so on, the home builders could all build right next door to each other. They just couldn't all be this, and they could build the same model home next door to each other. They just couldn't look the same from the outside, or be the same color, or anything like that. They all had to look different. And it was remarkably successful. The Airport Property in Austin is just like that, except in more of a southwest vernacular, Austin Sandstone, and some things like that. I just, I, I, I found the vast majority of the buildings not relative. And, and rather than dictate a process, we should be telling people what our goals are, and giving them the ability to implement those goals, knowing that there will be an approval if they are successful at implementing. So that's my speech, sorry. I just, read the first paragraph, guys.
Yeah, and I.
No ordinary person would ever understand what that paragraph says.
Councilor, I appreciate that, and I will, will strike out all that stuff. So that's, I, I get that. Um, I, I, um, I think that's fine, I think what you, your points are excellent. Um, you know, I, I will say that, uh, as we look around a various, some of the buildings that you saw were from the East, but some weren't. Um, they really did come from all over the country, but, uh, and some were from Sacramento, uh, and a few were from the Bay Area, um, but that's neither here nor there. You know, I think we were asked, we were tasked to identify four or five styles, um, and we'll still be looking for those, obviously. Uh, I think what you've identified as goals for the environment, or for the built environment is an excellent sort of way to sum that up. Um, I, I think a workshop would have been great. I, I really want to get this feedback, because I really didn't have any, you know, we hadn't had any direction from you all. So I, I, um, I appreciate that.
David, if I could?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, one, I, I would agree, I think this warranted a workshop. This is a lot of material, and for it to be last on the agenda, uh, I think, uh, is probably not the best planning, but we are where we are. Um, I, I didn't, I'm not nearly as interested in design as Linda is, so we can all agree that that is a very true statement. Um, and looking at these, though, I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem with any of them, um, as basic concepts that then, you know, me as a formal housing developer, I, I, you know, I did that for about five years, and, you know, yes, you can give people materials and all things like that, and then you can't get that rock, and then you have to do something different. And, you know, you run into those types of things where, but I think as a, as a general concept, the idea that we would have some sort of criteria that everyone can understand and know that, that they have some sort of predictability in the process and what we're ultimately looking for. Um, to me, design can't be like art, right? It can't be like what the Supreme Court defined it, you know, I don't know what art is, but I don't want to see, like, to have that kind of uncertainty makes it very difficult for some of these projects to move forward. Um, you know, with, and, and again, I would love to have further discussion about this in a workshop, but like, the, uh, the reference, and we continue to make it, because I really enjoyed that, it wasn't Bethesda, but I can't remember the name of that outside of Nashville, but-
West Haven.
West Haven, okay.
Yeah.
That's right, because Kurt Haven set it up for us in your own mind. That's right. West Haven, Kurt Haven, I won't forget that. Um, so, to me, I think one of the worst comparisons, especially maybe multifamily, but the master plan developments in general, comparing them to Texas and other places outside of California, you know, they, they don't have Prop 13, they don't front load their fees like everyone else does, and so the vast majority of developers in California have to take on the onus of mass amounts of debt and financing and costs at the very beginning of their process to build a house. And very few companies are going to take on building 500 or 1,000 houses when they have to finance, you know, arguably a quarter of the cost of, of a door, you know, at least a year beforehand. Um, and so I don't know if those, if the kinds of models that we look at in West Haven, where you could have eight different architects and developers and, and parse that all up, because really, you know, they, their development fees in Texas, because they pass a tip and then they pass that on, essentially at Melrose, um, you know, they, it costs them like seven or eight thousand dollars in fees to build a house in Texas, and then they reap the, uh, the benefits. On the other hand, a developer beyond just building the house and passing that on to the seller has to come up with all of these fees when they, the second they take out a brick. So I'd love to discuss this more and talk about the feasibility of how you get more creative in structuring, master plan developments in general, because, you know, as far as I can count it, we have, you know, the subdivisions down south of, of Douglas, and then you have two owners essentially of everything north of Douglas that's going to be new development.
Again, this is not for a master plan community, these are really being here-
No, I understand, I understand, thank you.
Multifamily.
No, I understand that, thank you. Um, but my point is the structuring of these deals, whether it's multifamily or not, the example that was given at West Haven was a single family for the most part development. And so when we look at any of these things, and we hire any developers to meet anything in this city, to me, as much as we can offer predictability, I think that, I think it's great, I think this is a good start in having a conversation and seeing what we do or we don't like. Um, you know, I hate to be that subjective and, and give that kind of input, because I'd rather have a developer buy land and we'll say we'll do everything that came to work with you, because, you know, ultimately VDX became a really great project, and it went through a lot of different iterations, including, you know, uh, an architect that didn't want to listen, that really wanted something modern, and didn't want to fit into the, to the development, once it developed, and found a different architect that had designed parts of Capital Village, and it worked out just fine.
Well, that's right, I forgot about that.
Yeah, but I mean, we had a developer where we said, you know, this rock doesn't match, and he goes, well, I'm not designing anything like that, because that's not what we designed today. And Spanos listened and said, we found, we found an architect that will listen. And we made that work, and it was arguably what made it happen. And for the most part, when I look at examples there, I don't see something that would fit what we see with VDX, which I would think is definitely an example of success, um, in the city, and I'd love to see that replicated, and I know I've had multifamily developers approach me about sites close to there and say, well, you know, we wouldn't have to build something as nice as what they did, and I'm like, why wouldn't you?
That reminds, that reminds me of, that reminds me of you know who telling us he was giving, he was bringing the, the project up to a seven, and I said, why aren't you bringing that project up to a 10?
Yeah, I remember that moment, too, Linda. Um, yeah, but I, I guess in general, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to give the feedback to is, I, I applaud the effort of what we're trying to do here, and what this is trying to do, which is trying to give the development community, this is what we'd like to see, so that you understand before you even buy land or start down the process, that, that this is the level of excellence that we're talking about. I think that's a great process, I think that's going to take more than, uh, an information item on, on a Monday agenda.
Absolutely.
Well, I, uh, I guess I agree, similar with Linda and also similar with Donald. Um, the parts in here I liked were, um, frankly, some of the form-based, um, elements, and in particular, I would say sort of that missing middle housing, you know, how do you transition from something dense to a neighborhood behind it which may be single-family? So having and including examples that sort of show that transition, um, perhaps in a urbanist way, or in a, in a transect, you know, sort of a way, you could, you could try to accomplish that. But I, I like those examples. The other thing I like is, uh, kind of some of the architecture out there, and labeling it as-
Too much interference, I can't hear.
Noise from somewhere.
Yes, I'm sorry, we couldn't quite catch that last line you said, or two lines, two lines ago.
Okay, I said, the other thing I really, I like is the labeling of some of the modern architectural junk as junk, you know, like, okay, so we think we have to do a bunch of different, uh, surfaces here, and a bunch of different colors, but there's no pattern or rationale to it at all, and you called it out very nicely in some of those X versus checkbox, um, scenarios. So I, I like that, because as the project I just mentioned, they did bring us something that was just not really compatible. I don't think everything in Rancho Cordova has to look like VDX, but when I went through those patterns and looked at them, I was thinking about, how would this fit on Fulton Boulevard? And ironically, you know, Linda said, oh, Mission, and that was the one I was ready to scratch off the list, you know? Because I'm not sure Mission works in Rancho Cordova, we don't have anything sort of of that age. Um, anyway, that, that's a whole different point. I like the, I, I do like the fact that we're sort of pointing to this is what our expectation is, as opposed to allowing, you know, developers to hire architects who can't achieve what we're interested in. This at least gives them a marker that says, that's what we're aiming at.
And I totally agree with that goal, David, but, but for instance, I mean, it is really difficult to imagine transitioning Fulton Boulevard in the next 30 years to a hard street front that looks like Santana Row, which is what most of those buildings, and most of those architectural styles look like. The only one that really had any, um, relief to the flat, uh, there's zero articulation in the majority of those styles, and the only one that had any relief was the, um, um, early 20th century mercantile that had the, the little storefronts at the bottom of it, but here again, it's because you, it didn't look, it didn't carry that image, because we were looking at it from a drone level, as opposed to looking at it from the street level. So we have to imagine what these buildings look like from the street level, and if there's nothing but a hard, flat surface at the back of sidewalk, even if it is an eight or 10-foot wide sidewalk, then that, it's just probably not going to work.
I think I was looking more at the example photos than at the, that standard model that they used over and over for each style. So I wasn't really imagining that standard model, I was imagining a merger of that and the, the variety of photos they had included.
As long as they've got, as long as they've got articulation, as long as they've got patios, the, the most gorgeous thing about VDX is being able to rent their three-bedroom, two-bath unit on the top floor with the double-sided balcony that overlooks the Village Green Park. And yes, you're, right now, you're going to pay $2,500 a month for it, but look what it comes with, all right? And if you want to show it, and there was an example of a, um, a courtyard-style building, doesn't VDX have about the best courtyard we've ever seen, with that beautiful pool and the bicycle, um, repair shop, and the gorgeous outdoor kitchen? You know, it just, they, they were not, they really looked like, they looked like somebody went inside on the first, the first day of the pool in September, and shut the door and didn't come out again until the snow melted on the first of April.
All right, any other comment?
Right.
I find it fascinating that Linda Button, Jeff, that she finds it hard to believe that Fulton Boulevard, uh, could look like Santana Row. I thought that was the goal, was the whole reason Fulton Boulevard looked like.
Santana Row is a miserable failure. Do you know that the buildings that actually back up to Stevens Creek Boulevard have, that are, that are retail buildings? Uh, at least two of them have no storefront entrances on, on Stevens Creek Boulevard. You've got to go inside Santana Row in order to actually get into the, to the building. And so if you look at the, um, the pictures that are on Google, there is nobody walking across the street from Valley Fair Shopping Center to Santana Row, because you can't get there once you get to the other side of the street.
It's been a long time since I've been there, but I'll believe you. I just, I just honestly, I, I will say that when I first ran for city council, the criticism of the, of the Fulton Boulevard specific plan was all, especially from property owners, was this idea that the city council wanted Fulton Boulevard to look like Santana Row. I, I, we've never had that conversation, so it's just fascinating to hear you articulate that position, because-
Nobody ever said that. Nobody ever said that.
I'm not, I, I, they never named names, they just said that, that's how they felt, the council felt, so it's just interesting to hear your feedback on that, I appreciate it.
All we ever heard was the people with the decrepit buildings who were upset that, um, some of the original zoning in the Fulton Boulevard specific plan was mixed-use and required some housing component.
Yeah, and, and, but, in, in, the ways in that was interpreted back to council candidates at the time, was that the council wanted, um, wanted to convert Fulton Boulevard into Santana Row, so it's, it's really fascinating, like, that was the example that they kept bringing back to me, so, interesting to hear that, yeah.
All right, any other comments?
No, I, I, I really think this is a great opportunity for a workshop.
Amen.
I think Bob had some comments, sorry, Councilman McGurvy.
I just, um, looking at the booklet, I think that most of what we saw was, uh, like, inside that booklet, and I didn't see anything that would fit Rancho Cordova in there, so maybe we can have a workshop and get some more ideas, designs, or something, but I didn't see much right then, tonight, that would be, uh, where I would see Rancho Cordova anyway.
So perhaps, Bob, it's too dense, too tall?
Yeah.
Something like that, is what you're thinking?
Uh-huh. I mean, what we put in, those apartments we put in next to, um, Lowe's, or, you know, that's in the height, but when we see the ones, maybe think about some of the, um, big buildings there in Chicago, that's out where all the, uh, people were, uh, and there's a, um, the poor families would be moving into those huge, you know, complexes, buildings like that, and that's what they reminded me of, in Chicago.
You're talking about Cabrini Rains.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, I don't think the examples we just saw compare to that, let's, let's be fair. But definitely what we're looking at is a much bigger product. Uh, I mean, some of those are three and four stories, it looked like, I mean, you know, at, at the top height, I believe VDX is five with the tuck and the parking, um, so it's not like some of these would need it. Uh, but again, I think we're more talking design and look and feel, if this isn't what we're looking for, then, you know, Stefan, let's get some other examples, and let's talk through it over an hour and a half or so, where we plan that this is what it is.
And also, Stefan, I, I think what you just heard, and kind of what I said earlier, was, you know, how would this fit somewhere on Fulton Boulevard? What would that edge look like between single-family backyard and the first structure on the other side of the property line? Versus, I don't know, something in a, you know, where that single-family home is kind of remote, right? You could, you could clearly build something different if that single-family home is not, not next door.
Um, David, let's add to that, because, because I, I know you and I have commented that, um, it would be great if we replicate that village east of Sunrise, anywhere, and maybe in several locations. And so in order to have, um, a mix of densities, in order to have a mix of, um, elevation, um, height elevation, in order to, in order to create, um, um, even mixed-income communities, we're going to need to, uh, to be able to mix the height of the building, but it's got to, um, it's got to sort of grow into it, it's got to evolve, it can't just be like, um, all of a sudden on the middle of the prairie, there's six stories.
Exactly. The, the other area to be considered here, I suppose, is where, um, the Rancho Cordova Parkway would intersect with Highway 50, and what would be built immediately south of the canal? Because that's not going to be like a Fulton Boulevard project, that's not going to have that burden of, there's, single-family homes right next to it, that could be a really dense node within entirely different architecture.
And, and access, walking access to the train station, absolutely perfect.
Yep.
And Council, if I may-
Yeah, well, and David, you're, as you say, David, your example of, you know, a development right next to housing is going to be, you know, what we're talking about at the Civic Center site, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the bells.
Where we talked about putting multifamily, and we have houses very close, and we're going to have to figure out how we have big buildings next to houses, very soon, like, too.
And that was even more exacerbated, Donald, it's a great example, because you're on a bluff right there, before you go down into the meadows. So whatever we put on that back tier-
That's right.
-of the Civic Center, is really going to look over both the apartments as well as the single-family homes behind.
Yeah, and that's a view to the river from the top floor there.
Good.
So, Council, I-
And they probably, that's a good thing.
I think, uh, Council, I understand that there seems to be broad interest to bring this topic back for a work session setting, so, uh, we will work on a time, hopefully in the next month or two, to bring this back for, uh, some workshops setting, so we can take these comments into- to bring this back for, uh, some workshop settings so we can take these comments into consideration and have a more in-depth discussion.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Stefan, there was a Secog workshop on missing middle housing, you could request that. I think they may have videoed it, I'm not sure, or recorded it, um, but there was a great, great presentation on that topic.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look at that. And I, I do want to emphasize that this is really great feedback, um, it's really not too late in this process. We haven't gone very far down the road, so this is an excellent time, I think, to get this feedback at least. And we'll, we'll regroup and replan and come back for that work session, um, with, with a more in-depth discussion.
And that's, the whole success/failure images of other architecture, I think that's, that's still really useful.
Okay.
I think that tells us a lot and allows us to say a lot. You know, I, I'm thinking of the, there was a building there where it was all one color and, uh, and you couldn't tell where the ground floor was. I've seen that building, you know, and it was pulled out, I really like that.
Yeah, all the feedback tonight has been really good and, and we appreciate that as we, as we kind of think about, you know, I mean, we, we came in with the goal of trying to make sure this is the right direction, so I think, you know, we've got, we've gotten very good feedback that we're not quite on the right direction, which is what we were looking for. So, I think this prepares us well, I think, for our next discussion and, and we, we plan to have several discussions about this project until we could, you know, get to the final product. So, um, definitely not unanticipated that we would have some, some critical discussion and, and probably some more too at the next work session, but we'll, we'll get there, we're confident, so.
The other thing you, Stefan, you should pull is, uh, um, the draft documents being worked on for, uh, the corridor project at Secog, that's going to be finalized within the next month or so, um, or six weeks, somewhere in that timeframe. Be sure and get a look at that and see how many of those recommendations can be incorporated into what we're working on here.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you very much, Neil, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, that was great feedback, I really appreciate it.
Uh, we are moving on to item number seventeen and I think Adam has something for us on council request for future agenda items.
Thank you very much, Council. Um, we heard a request from Council that, uh, I would plan to be on point for and, uh, that also would involve support from the city manager and his designated staff members. The council would like us to come back with a, uh, uh, relatively comprehensive look at the, the jurisdictional limitations it has as a city on its authority to regulate things that go on inside of and affect your mobile home parks. So, this will require us to take a, give you a, a brief but thorough update and education on the scope of state expansion of mobile home parks and some of the subject matters in which cities do or do not regulate. Um, topics will include rent control, code enforcement and other powers. Um, we will, with the city manager's support and assistance, include at least some comments, um, not just about the legality but about the, the adminis-, um, challenges, the extent of, of involvement, um, and commitment that the city might be making by getting interested in regulating in some of these areas, I think. In addition to the comments that I heard directed at me with respect to the purely legal issues, um, the report might not be as useful and informative to the council as it could be without at least some mention of whether or not something you might ask us to do later would be very easy and realistic or, on the other hand, really, really complicated and will, something that would require a significant ongoing funding stream. So, um, city manager, Abhar, if I've said that correctly and to your satisfaction, I think that's something that we could commit to getting back in this calendar year, but it will be a fairly significant endeavor to cover, um, those and a few more topics if there are selected, specific additional topics in addition to those that, that you hear and we wanted to collaboratively be the agenda item a bit over the, the coming weeks. Um, I'd be happy to do that.
There might, um, there might be bits of information at the League of Cities on dealing with mobile homes, uh, in California, I'm not sure. I know I've heard a talk, uh, and it was about, I think facilitating, one of the things that was mentioned was facilitating the conversion of a mobile home park into basically an HOA-like community where it was owned by residents.
You're, you're right, there, there have been, there, there have been, the, the league and other, other agencies have addressed that. I, I appreciate that, if I can accept that as permission to, to borrow rather than just create, um, that would be great.
Yep, that's...
Yeah, Adam, you, again, and I think Linda, you mentioned the Gold State Mobile Home, TSMOL, I can't remember what the one L is...
Yeah.
Owners League, I believe is what it is.
Yeah.
Um, I know there's a board member that lives in, um, Gold Country Mobile Home that's on, that's on that board and her name is escaping me at the moment. Um, Brian Augusta has represented them in the past with, through Housing Advocates, Inc., and I can connect you, Adam.
Are you talking about, Donald, you talking about the lady who lives down at Centennial Estates on Vicentennial Drive?
No, no, she lives out of that, sorry. At Golden, I believe, I believe she lives in Golden Country or Golden...
You mean Mo- our Mobile Country Club?
Yeah. Let me call Mobile Country Club, excuse me.
Yeah, Shmo, Shmo.
Oh, okay.
Down the Vicent- uh, Vicentennial Circle, down by the...
So, but I know that, that that organization has been represented by a guy named Brian Augusta who is a, he, he works a lot in affordable housing advocates groups, but his, the name of the company is Housing Advocates, Inc. We might want to reach out to him and maybe pick his brain a little bit about what's going on at the state level, what kind of legislation have they looked at. Um, I'd be real interested to see how the passes during, you know, Prop twenty-one might affect this type of conversation as well. I don't think it really does, but, um, helping us understand kind of where all those moving pieces are when it comes to this kind of stuff. But really, I, I, again, I guess what I was just asking for, because I, I don't know what I don't know and I've had a lot of people tell me that I, that we have a lot more power than I believe we do. And to, I, I'd really just like to explore that. And, and to David's point, the co-ops, I know, I don't know, you know, since the Great Recession, how this worked, but I know when I worked at Wal-Mart Fargo, we had a product to finance, to help, with private financing to help, um, owners become co-op owners. And some of the first examples of, of those were in the town that I grew up in, in Santa Cruz. Uh, some of the first co-ops in California were the, the, literally the tenants buying the land from the owners and turning it into a co-op. Um, and you've even seen examples of that in like San Francisco where, um, multi-family developer, developments, the renters bought it and financed it and everyone had shares, they could sell out their shares along with their house and stuff. So, there's a lot of examples of very creative financing that beyond any kind of stick that we could wield against owners, there's probably a lot of other things that we could do to, to help the residents become the control of, of these sites.
David, I think I remember hearing something in the League of California Cities also about that Mobile Country Club and sort of problem and how other cities are taking care of it. Maybe it's in the League of California Cities. Either way, whatever we can gather and, uh, bring back to this city, I would appreciate it, our city council needs.
All right. Thank you all very much, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Let's bring those two...
I have one. David, I have one.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one. Um, I, I talked to staff about this and, and they suggested that I, um, requested as a future agenda item. Um, uh, what triggered it was, um, the governor saying that, um, they wanted to phase out, um, gas, gasoline-powered cars by two thousand thirty-five. So, regardless of that, any way you look at it, um, there, I, I forwarded a, a great article about the fact that non-proprietory electric chargers are being developed for wide deployment. And even the last, um, that, um, staff report about Green Means Go, David, they are looking to accelerate, um, electric vehicle depart-, uh, deployment. And it seems to me the most logical thing we could do to help all this along would be to, uh, add to our development standards, it's just a real simple fix. Add to our development standards for gas stations, air requirement that everybody install at least one electric charger. Um, it would be, it would be in the same column as, um, your canopy can be so big and you have to have your state mandated, mandated sign on the corner so that it can be seen from both directions and you need so many parking spaces for your convenience store and that kind of thing. Um, it would just be a real simple fix and I would love to have staff bring it back to us as a code amendment. So, I hope everybody agrees.
Yeah, I'm interested in reading.
So, Council, I...
From my perspective, it's the most, it's the most incredible marketing tool.
I, I think the only com- the only comment I have to make is, uh, this is not an agendized item, so, uh, maybe the first step is for the council, if, if the council approves this, uh, uh, the topic to be placed on a future agenda item, we can bring it back for, with some potential modification and then follow through with any possible code amendments.
And of course, it would apply only to new construction or remodeling, it wouldn't apply, it would not apply retro, uh, retroactively.
And those are all the details that need to be discussed when, when the policy proposal is being considered.
Okay, I have one.
And, and just to, in support, to the city manager, I think perhaps if, if the council is interested in this, perhaps it would really take a, a, a two-step process of bringing it back to a, with, uh, a discussion to further explore it before perhaps bringing it on for a specific amendment, is that what you were suggesting?
Well, no, frankly, I would just go out and do it, but, um, if you want to sit and chat about it, that's okay.
Cyrus, would you like to have a item come back first that is a discussion of it?
Um, does the council support that? I think that's, uh, the first question that we need to ask.
Correct.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting.
Sure.
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, I think we're headed for adjournment and we're going to adjourn in memor- in remembrance of Alisaba, early, uh, leader here in Ranch Cudahoe and Ross McCarty, who I knew and will, uh, will miss very much. Um, Ross was a very acerbic guy.
Uh-huh.
The great thing about him was, the harder he was on you, the more you knew he liked you, so...
He, he was, uh, if I, if I may, Mayor, he was, he was one of the funniest people in Rotary in the time I, I, I joined them, just a, a very great, dry humor.
Absolutely, absolutely, great guy.
And great, unforgettable.
All right, with that, we are adjourned, thank you all.
Good night, um...